Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 4th, 2021 Reno City Planning Commission. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Arlo, we don't hear from you very much. Do you mind leading us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the great republic which has stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michelle. Can we please have roll call?
Okay, Alex Belto.
Here.
Katie Draculich.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Arthur Munoz is absent, sorry. Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
May I have a call?
Okay, thank you. And before we move on to public comment, we've had a request to move item 5.3, the Public Safety Center variance up after unfinished business because we have some law enforcement folks here that need to get back to doing more pertinent things. Commissioners, is that okay? Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, we will do that. Michelle, do we have any general public comment?
I did not receive any public comment cards for this, nor did I receive any emails or voicemails.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment and move on to item number four, unfinished business, public hearings. This is item 4.1, case number LDC 21-00063 Corwin Ford. This is for a conditional use permit to allow an auto dealership and a non-residential development adjacent to residential zoning. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? The mask is a little bit different. Commissioners, thank you for having us this evening. We had a few continuces. Looking forward to a meeting with you in person. My name is John Krempadek. My names are noted at the bottom of the screen. The entire team is here. The developer, Dan Wilson, who's an owner with Corwin Ford. Jeffrey Frame, our architect. Our attorney, Michael Pawnee. Civil engineer, Justin Farley was the lead designer on this. Also, the president of Reno Engineering, Vince, is with us. Our traffic engineer, Lauren, is with us. As noted by the chair in introduction, this is a request, CUP request, for the auto dealership and the residential adjacency. Always important in public process, as you commissioners know best. We had our own hosted, our applicant hosted, meeting on June 22nd. We invited 124 properties. There were obviously more people involved than that. We had a Zoom meeting. It was the, it was the, the meeting venue of choice at the time. It was more convenient for people. This map was prepared by staffs that we did it per the NRS noticing requirements. 124 properties that were invited. I have a list of comments if you wanted to go through that, but we'll get through the hearing part first. Here is our vicinity map. We're just trying to show what's going on. I think it's interesting that in the legal analysis that there were 23 properties noted, some of which are on the screen that are auto dealership or dealership type of uses. Everybody in the room, I'm sure, is aware of the kind of many of them to the south. Mercedes, CarMax, Acura, Bill Pierce. There was a recent expansion there, Porsche. And then also kind of smaller used lot, car lots on South Virginia. And RVs going to the north of the property. There's our 15.92 acre site. And of course, the south boundary of South Hills is kind of a key marker in this. MS zoning, just by way of note, the commission, many of you know this very well, but in January of '21, the city council finally made the decision after we embraced a very large community project in updating the zoning code, the designations. And it is now designated MS, which is mixed-use suburban. Both of the things that we're questioning, of course, are allowed in MS with a conditional use permit. So my comments are going to be about our site design, how we really pushed for in our design compatibility, and then also our concessions and working with the community. I note the June meeting, but equally as important is meeting onsite with three of the adjacent property owners, myself, and discussing where the building is. We did photo simulations at that meeting. We talked about issues, the relationship to Virginia Street, the zoning. I mean, a lot of educational pieces to that. And there's been many meetings with the community outside of that formal one that we hosted. What I'm showing here is a map, kind of the key pieces of the site design. On the bottom there, at the bottom of the screen, adjacent to residential, we now have the new parking layout. And there's a condition I'll get to a little bit later that relates to that. But as we have it this evening, the area to the left in magenta is just display area. That's the single least intense part of the site, the most, or the least desirable cars for sale. That would basically be storage of vehicles in that area. The blue is no longer service parking. That is designated employee. What's important is it's lower activity, lower turnover. As it was when we went through this process and we heard staff loud and clear, and we heard the community, that that area was service operation, service parking coming and going is, does not exist anymore. That is our latest plan. Designated employee with strict hours of operation that are during the daytime hours for this Corwin Ford operation. Equally as important to that and related is that, you know, I spent a lot of time with staff, Nate particularly, is the, is the staff lead on this. And he expressed so much concern about the west side operation as we had it. I've talked to several of the commissioners about that. We've done away with all of the bays on that west side of the building adjacent to that employee parking. It was our last concession. This was not in the staff report. Staff asked me to present it to the commission. So here we are. You see, there's no activity with those service bays, detail bays, wash bays on that west side. It was significant to the community. I think it was very significant to staff. Equally important is the throat here that we have. And I'll just leave it to the commission why we have the building where we have. We think it's the ideal building orientation and location as it relates to the residential adjacency because it actually gives us now the quiet side on the west with no activity, no circulation. That's closed off, that's fenced off. Gives us the nice throat on Virginia Street. And so we have a D cell lane peeling off track and traffic on Virginia, turning into the site and having good storage there. And then coming to the several options as a customer off of Virginia. It's a, it's a, a key piece to why circulation and the site plan is the way it is. On the right side of the building, which is between South Hills and that south side of the building, again, that's all fenced off. That's employee parking designated with gate access control only. And then the rest of the site, there's some customer parking next to the building and mostly display, right? The nature of the business is such that your merchandising is on a lot. Landscape summary. This came up a lot in our community meeting. Why, there's the sustainability part of it. You got heat islands because of the use. Bottom line is where we focused our effort is on that, that west buffer. You can see a lot of tree density there. That is 267% of code. It's important because we were trying to be real sensitive to that neighborhood, really that relationship of a single family on the west side. And then also kind of overshoot the code. And then we have, so basically, 488 trees, 2,800 shrubs. There's essentially no trees on this site today of any value. So it is significant in our overall design. I'll go through the elevations quickly. So that is the front of the building. Glass is important because we're in the, the mixed-use corridor. And so there's a transparency requirement that deals with a certain amount of glass, both vertically and horizontally in that primary elevation as it relates to the South Virginia corridor. North elevation, you can also see the glass there. You get, there's the service bays as you're going further to the, away from the front of the building there. Similar on the south side, some service bay access. Then the west side, that is not updated because we left it at a certain point in time with staff, but all of those overhead doors have been removed. On the west property line, I think we can all visualize that where we're at. So there's the, of course, this is scaled horizontally and vertically. And what we're showing here is that buffer and cross-section detail. One tree per eight feet, 266% of code. But the, probably more compelling to me, when I look at this site and I look at adjacency and our responsibility and the test we have to prove compatibility. Look at the existing residents. This, in this case, this is the Jones property, which is somewhere in alignment with where the building is sitting. And you look at their elevation and you look at the curb elevation at the bottom of that slope, and there's 16-foot drop. 16-foot drop in the context of a 26-foot tall building. So even if you didn't have a fence, you'd have only 10-foot of building that is above the grade of the adjacent lots. There's a little bit of variation lot to lot that you guys get. It's generally a flat area. And we're talking 16 feet down with two tiers of rockery walls, plus the evergreens and shrubs and deciduous trees that are in there. The six-foot wall, by the way, we had a privacy fence that met the, you know, a little bit nicer on the eyes. Six-foot tall wood fence that actually had some enhancements to it that met the noise standard from the noise expert. So it meets all that city code. But staff informed us that it was not an option. I respect that. So we swapped it out to put a six-foot tall masonry wall on the property line. Little more kind of a sound barrier, probably not, not as friendly to the eye, but it needed to be for code. Here's an alternative plan. It's no longer an alternative plan. We have embraced the staff suggestion, the condition as they've written it, which is, it seemed like the majority of people, again, living to the west, wanted us to have the evergreen trees and the screen as that grows on the bottom of the slope. And then deciduous trees, which a little more filtering screen, right? And then, of course, winter scape, it's a little bit easier to see through. So that was the idea. So we've accepted the staff condition. I forget which one it was. But deciduous trees on the top, the evergreen trees on the bottom. And we've actually proposed the condition. Staff formalized it and we're just fine with it. It was entirely a neighbor issue. So no longer alternate. South Virginia corridor, we show this because it's still a significant standard. It's nothing to do with buffering. It's everything to do with a streetscape, right? South Virginia, we're making a lot of investment, even though we're very far south. You get a wide corridor with planting, with a shrub, a shrub bed, a six-foot wide concrete walk. And even though it's vacant to the north and south, some, we start somewhere. I think this really jumps it ahead in doing the right thing for nurturing that corridor for pedestrians and for a nice streetscape. Want to get into the photo simulations. So, um, you know, it's important that you guys trust what we've done here on photo simulations because there's a level of modeling and precision here that has to be, to be credible. So I have an architect who has become a simulation expert that looks at things with detail. And so I met with Mr. Archer on his property. He's one of the properties. This is very typical, probably a 30-foot rear yard setback, six-foot tall fence. His fence happens to be in excellent condition. You can see a little bit of screen there. This, this is facing due out. And then we have another one that faces a little bit oriented to the Virginia range. Keep going back. So facing straight out, you can see toggling back and forth. That's the height of the building that is 77 feet from proper line as we designed it at the elevation we designed it and modeled with the 26-foot height. So you see a little band of the building. I will tell you, in my opinion and in my understanding and working a lot with this community, it's always about the people that are the nearest the project. I thought this was very well received at the NAB and in our individual contact with the community members. Same spot, standing on the patio, facing the mountains, turned about 30 or 40 degrees. So now you can see the Virginia range. And here's a different perspective of the same building right there. Sitting on the patio, fair analysis, inappropriate. Eye height, as you probably know, is about 42 feet for somebody sitting on a patio, excuse me, 42 inches, sitting on a patio chair. So we modeled it that way. It just so happens the building at this particular location is not even visible because of eye height. By the way, I could have been a little more crafty. It's a guy my height that happened to take the pictures from Mr. Archer's patio. And if it was somebody five foot tall, I mean, seriously, what have we would have seen? But it is what it is, full disclosure. There you go again. So basically, the top of the building, and so we see that little tiny bit of band of gray right at the top of the fence line, that is the building height. The key point is sitting there, right? And we've really thought about, you know, that orientation of the building, the placement of the building, and how it relates to view impact and not hiding behind anything that would work advantageously for us. So here's, I think our code is, you know, I was part of that committee, that committee that staff led in doing these Title 18 updates. And I think we have a huge test to ensure residential compatibility and residential with this Article 14 residential adjacency in our code as it's written today. And if you look, I'm not going to go through every one of these, but just to give you guys a flavor of what burden we've had and what we've met. And there's a few of them that I think are significant. Use limitations, public, you know, the car dealerships allowed. We know about the use part of this. The grading, I think it's important. Our engineers, that's an iterative process, right? They lowered that building. And then you raise it up a bit as it gets into the middle of the site because you have to have positive drainage, so it goes away from the building. But bottom line is where it's sitting, it's still 12 feet below the adjacent residential. So not are there, are there no fill slopes. It's all cut in that portion of the site. Site and building orientation, of course, the front of the building is the intense part. That's all oriented to Virginia Street, including the bulk of the traffic and the circulation with the customers. The signage, there is no signage. Spillover lighting, we, this actually came up a fair amount with the community. And that is more comfortable, bear with me, my mask down. The lighting is now 0.00. It means no spillover. And you go, how can that be? Well, it is. It's all modeling, right? We have light standards that we control, the height of the standards, the illumination intensity. And what we've done is now have it at 0.0 so that there's no disruption. We also, Mr. Wilson was part of that meeting. Because it was expressed, he just volunteered a 10 o'clock turnoff for all lighting, with the exception of the wall packs that would be secured lighting on that, on the building. I think that the community embraced that as a nice mitigation thing. Noise, I'm, there's a lot that goes on there. I couldn't.
John, you've got about 30 seconds.
Oh, is that right? Well, I'm going to.
You're over time.
Sorry, did I have 15 minutes? Okay. Let's see. You can see the use limitations, grading, odor, of course, that's not a significant issue here. Off-street parking, cut through traffic, we've dealt with that in conditions. Use of alleys and loading activities, we dealt with in a big way with the community. Can I go through a few conditions? Are you going to?
No, we have a very long night tonight.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. If I could address, have some time maybe, and I guess there is no rebuttal time, but whatever, I'd like to talk about a few conditions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Nate?
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. John gave a comprehensive overview of the applicant's request. Again, the subject site is a 15.92 acre portion of a larger parcel. The requests are conditional use permits to establish an auto dealership use in the mixed-use suburban zone and to allow non-residential development adjacent to residential zoning. Initially, when initial public notice went out, we received a large volume of public interest citing a previous Washoe County document. So I just, I did want to give an overview of the zoning history on the site and the immediate area. In 1998, Washoe County adopted the South Virginia Street Corridor Specific Plan. This was when it was unincorporated Washoe County. It was a 1998 Washoe County planning document. And that did preclude auto dealership uses on the west side of South Virginia Street at that time. In 2002, the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan established the South Virginia corridor area as a transit-oriented development corridor. In 2007, the city of Reno adopted the South Virginia Street Transit-Oriented Development Corridor Master Plan and Associated Zoning. And most recently, in 2017, Reimagine Reno assigned the mixed-use, excuse me, suburban mixed-use land use designation. And most recently, with our code update, the former mixed-use South Virginia Transit Corridor was converted to the mixed-use suburban zoning designation. Suffice to say, auto dealerships have been allowed with an approved special use permit or conditional use permit since 2007 on the site. John covered the overall site design with requested modifications to the bays in the background. Staff analysis in your staff report included the previous designation. It's a 96,550-square-foot building area. Code would otherwise require at least 30% of building frontage to face towards South Virginia Street. And it allows for an exemption to that provided that associated pedestrian amenities are provided, which the applicant proposed in the site plan. Approximately 914 parking spaces with internal and perimeter landscaping and pedestrian connectivity. The building has vertical and horizontal articulation on all sides with building heights ranging from 26 to 32 feet, the 55-foot maximum building height allowed in that zoning district. There's also 135-foot Project Pylon sign proposed on South Virginia Street and five wall signs. Overall compatibility, as John mentioned, the site is proposed to be, site grading is 13 and 1/2 feet below adjacent residential properties. Code requires that solid wall. And the applicant is proposing a 27-foot landscape, three-to-one slope buffer from adjacent properties. The building's set back 75 feet from the nearest residential property line. The associated sound study submitted with project material demonstrates compliance with daytime noise standards. And all residential adjacency design and operation standards are met. Some key conditions of approval, related condition five restricts flashing and animated signs that would otherwise be allowed on South Virginia Street. Condition six is a standard construction hours of operation restrictions. Condition seven requires the primarily deciduous trees that John went over at the top of that landscape buffer. This was at the request of adjacent property owners. Condition eight requires removal of the westernmost single-row parking area to limit the overall vehicular impacts. And condition nine also addresses some modifications proposed by the applicant, which relocates the South Hills Drive access 140 feet from the nearest residential property line and prohibits any right, right turns onto South Hills Boulevard. Condition 10 through 12 are related to implementation of the mitigation measures recommended in the sound study. Condition 13 would prohibit any outdoor public address and sound systems. And condition 14 was also elected by the applicant to further restrict onsite lighting and hours of operation for the lighting. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions at the appropriate time.
Thanks, Nate. Commissioners, let's go through disclosures. Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have communicated with the applicant's representative, visited the site, and received and read emails.
Commissioner Villanueva? Commissioner Villanueva, I have visited the site and read emails.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have visited the site, received and read emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Same disclosures, Commissioner Draculich?
Same disclosures. In addition, I spoke to some people in opposition.
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. Michelle, do we have public comment for this item?
I did not receive any public comment for this item. I did not receive any voicemails either and no public comment cards.
Okay, we, does anybody wish to speak under this item? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or of Nate, who would like to get started. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, if you could come up, there's a conflict I see between your presentation and the conditions. And I'm assuming that's one of the ones that you're speaking about. The site plan that you showed still included parking on the west side. And you indicated there was a change to make that employee parking, which seems to be at odds with the condition prohibiting parking on that side. Could you walk me through the thinking on that?
Yeah. Here was the thinking. I, I, I trust that Nate would agree that I spent a lot of time with him to really understand his, you know, real burning issues. And I'm focused on staff now as a professional, a guy that I have a lot of respect for. And he, he just expressed so many times about that west side operation. And I'm hearing from Corwin that they needed that west side for their detail and their service. At the end of day, I think I convinced him how big a deal this was to staff. And I said, can you look at relocating those doors to the north and south? But he says, we're already down from their pro forma parking count as they go into a 16-acre site, 150 spaces. I'm not talking parking, I'm talking display, right? It's the sum of display, service, customer, and employee. But they're down 150 spaces in their general operation when they go seeking a new site. So what we wanted to propose to the commission, and by the way, we proposed most of those conditions, seven through 14, staff formalized them. But that was the one we would ask for staff, for the commission, to agree with us on keeping that parking designated as such, restricted to the hours of operation for employee in the blue band and the display area and the, and the red band of parking there, in exchange for closing off the west side operations of the building.
Okay, thank you. Nate, I guess I'll follow up with you. As a condition that's written, obviously, what's being proposed here is at odds with that. Have you, has staff analyzed or had any discussions apparently with the applicant about this?
Yes, that, that condition number eight was primarily related to the previous site design with the number of service bays directly facing the residential property. Staff's concern was, although the, the noise analysis indicated that it would be within the 65 decibel daytime sound limit, that the activity of upwards to 40 cars a day queuing and, you know, operations such as that would be problematic. So with the revised site design, that would generally address staff's concern in that regard.
Okay, so the, the removal of the basically building access from that side has made the idea of having parking over there more tenable to staff and would allow the commission to decide whether we want to change or accept the modification of that condition?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I'll defer the rest of my questions, give the rest of the commission an opportunity.
Commissioner Draculich?
Yeah, that was, oh, my. Is that better now?
Hang on just a second.
Is that better now? Okay. That was my only concern too, that I saw was incongruent, is what Commissioner Johnson.
That was my only concern too that I saw was incongruent is what Commissioner Johnson brought up, so I understand now. So you made some changes, there's been changes made, so now we're happy with that west side parking lot. It does seem like the lowest level of activity that could happen back there. I had questions about the building's location, and if you move it anymore towards Virginia Street, you're just creating more traffic for those neighbors to the west. So I, I just want to be clear, I just want to fall in line with you there. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Mr. Veltro?
Yes. Could I get some clarification just on the language for that Condition 8, so that we know if, what exactly the language we'd be considering is?
Nathan Gilbert, for the record. Commissioner Veltro, I believe the applicant is requesting to strike Condition Number 8.
Oh, not, not make it so it limits it to employees during regular business hours? Or is that a different?
I think it would make sense to, should the commission make it an affirmative motion to include the, the site plan as submitted by the applicant this evening? Thank you.
Mr. Villanueva?
This question's for the applicant, applicant's representative. So in exchange for the parking space for employees, it appears that some of the west side operations are going to be removed. What operations are those that are going to be removed? Is that the indoor washing centers and the vacuuming and things like that?
Did you say what operations on the west side?
Yes.
So what we had, can we go to a site plan or? Thank you, sir. Yeah. So, so what we had there, if you can see, you can see kind of the, the graphic that illustrates the bays. We had washing, detailing, that were eight bays, basically on the north half of that west side that have all gone away. Now they're accessed from those bays, north and south, and then they turn in pointing toward the west, but of course it's enclosed. And we did the subsequent noise study too. You probably saw that analysis that modeled that, just not assuming it was actually quieter, but proved, quieter, but actually proved it up.
Okay, great. And the, so I, you had the example with the wall and the neighboring residents and what they could see. And I understand the lighting's going to be pretty much nonexistent from my understanding. What about private, or the cameras? Is there going to be security cameras in that rear end? And is that going to invade on some of the privacy of some of those residents?
No, we, we, they do have security cameras, but nothing in that area. Remember that the height of the cameras will be below the residences.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, question for you. So John, we've, we've talked a lot over the years about South Virginia Street, kind of the vision for that corridor. Obviously, it's changed over time since 1998, 2002, that sequencing that Nathan had up on the screen. When you look at this project in the context of the master plan, how do you reconcile a car dealership in what was previously, you know, the transit-oriented development corridor for the city of Reno?
If, if you think back to our conversations, I don't know, this goes back a ways, doesn't it, Commissioner Gower? So you can probably recall where I've had some strong opinions about planning in a, you know, not idealistic, but certainly a more functional sense. And we've always talked, and you've heard me say, I think we got a beautiful corridor that's been nurtured and invested upon with a lot of public investment and now private to follow from the university down to Plum Lane. A narrow street, so you got a character issue. You got lower volume and lower speeds, but the narrower street, and now you're getting buildings to the street. I think, remember, we had very few projects that worked that were labeled TOD south of, especially this far south. But going in south to say, you know, the, the convention area is kind of a mental cutoff and a physical cutoff. It's, it's such a radical character change. It feels like a highway, because it is a highway. And so when I think of that corridor in real planning terms, you know, lower streets, volumes, lower speeds, narrower street, and I can see it happening from north, or south McCarran to the north, and it can be a beautiful product, and I guess that's going to come someday for the investment in the TOD. We don't have the population intensity, we don't have the density to maintain that corridor this far south. And I think it's somehow recognized in the process of which changed the master plan and the zoning.
I appreciate that answer.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask staff a similar question, Madam Chair. Nathan, I'm looking at the general approval criteria of finding one and conditional use permit. Finding one, and that's the reason for my question to, to John. You know, do you concur with his rationale? And when you look at this project in the context of the master plan and the updates that we just went through in Title 18, that the use and as it's designed is consistent with the vision that's articulated in that plan?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Commissioner Gower, specifically the suburban mixed-use policy portion of the master plan outlines a more suburban, car-oriented, transitional type of zoning. So the course for the suburban mixed-use designation, the corresponding mixed-use suburban base zoning designation does allow for auto-oriented uses. When the Planning Commission and Council were involved with the code update, certain districts, the more intense urban districts, mixed-use urban, there were specific standards that would preclude generally in most locations in the mixed-use district. That wasn't applied to the suburban mixed-use designation.
And there's no concern from staff's perspective of, of the use being contrary to previous vision because we've gone through a process to, to update the master plan to articulate that vision?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hey Nate, I have a quick question while we're on the site plan. I, I must have missed the memo. So the information that I have in my packet is different than the information that was presented tonight, and I think the information presented tonight is a better product, but I want to make sure that I'm understanding it. So the information that I have in my packet shows the washing and the detailing, that's the most recent that we received. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so when did the changes come? Which again, I think I'm in favor for, but when did this change happen from moving those operations away and some of the western activities and the parking?
That was discussed by the applicant as a potential option several weeks ago. Because this item had been continued so often, we wanted the applicant to provide the opportunity to present the modification to the Planning Commission.
So do, when we move forward, do we need to discuss that they have a new site plan that is going to be looked at?
As discussed with Commissioner Veltro, I think, yes, it would be prudent to add a condition that the site plan and orientation presented this evening by the applicant be included.
Okay, so the washing and the detailing is going to go away from the west end. It looks like those 10 bays are going to go away from the west end. The other thing I had a question on is the setback from the residents in, what I can see, it looks like it was about 27 feet, and then I thought I saw something that that's being pushed to 65 feet. Is that accurate?
It's a 20, 27-foot landscape buffer. It's 75 feet from the residential property line to the actual building.
Okay. And then the parking, again, is just going to be for employees on the western end?
That's what the applicant proposed.
Okay. Thank you so much. Other questions, commissioners? Okay, I have another question. This is either for the applicant or for Nate. We received public comment that one of the stakeholders that came to this meeting and spoke before the commission was visited by the owner of the property and felt threatened at some point. I don't know if that person's here tonight, but that was in our packet. And John, do you want to address that? If that's accurate? That's very concerning.
I appreciate the question, and I have the same concern to understand the nature of what had went on. I spoke with her today. I called her because she was like, you know, there's always a community leader that's very involved and visible to the process. And she was influential with her neighbors. She wrote an email that was a pretty concerning email, the tone of that email. I said, do you feel threatened? Her, her name is Adriana. I think it's, her last name is Marin, or it's a hyphenated name, bear with me. And so she, she, she was in a very nice mood with me, and she was not threatened. It was one of the property owners, and I defended him as a very nice man, because he is. And he was frustrated with the public process and felt he has some rights that were maybe not being followed here. And so, I, I mean, the fact that she's, was told me she's not coming and that we've addressed a lot of her concerns, she says, can you put forth that pesticide? No, no pesticide condition. I said, I can, but the commission's probably not going to, because it's not enforceable, the property owner. You know, those kinds of things on sustainability were important to her. We tried to embrace them all. But on, on, on what was, this interaction that went on with her and one of the property owner representatives, I, I think was just, she was, he was emotional, and she was when she wrote the email, and I'm, I'm being very respectful to it, I don't want to dismiss it. But she was really gentle today, as was I.
So to follow up, there was a person that came to this meeting, made a public comment.
That's right.
And then one of the property owners had a side conversation, whatever that was.
Right.
Out of this meeting.
Yes.
And then the person wrote in again saying that she was intimidated by it. That's what she said. But that did actually-
She's intimidated, yes. That's probably, yeah. Intimidated at the time, and I, I, I just promise you that she seemed really good with it today. And I told her what a nice man he is, and he, he was just a little bit assertive and a little bit, you know, maybe overbearing at his, at a point in time. But he did not threaten her sheet, because I told her I was going to share this with the commission if it came up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Nate, commissioners, do you have any other questions? I don't, I think we might have, I saw code enforcement, but code enforcement had provided a letter with some of the concerns, and it seems like the new additions address all of the concerns in the code enforcement. Is, is that accurate? And do, has code enforcement, have their concerns been addressed by you?
I, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Villanueva?
I just want to say, thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing that up regarding the public comment, and that was, I'm glad you touched on that, so.
So I guess we can bring it back to the commission now for discussion? Would like to get us going. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I, I appreciate the discussion this evening. I am in favor of the proposed modification of, I guess, elimination of Condition Number Eight with a tie-in to the current site plan as presented this evening. I think that's the, the right way to go. I appreciate the, the conversations. One thing that we didn't touch on tonight, but I believe the conditions take care of it, is the issue of, of traffic into the neighborhood. We had this at our last meeting with another project, and I believe that the conditions that limit the truck access and that have the signage on the site regarding any kind of right-hand turn to go toward the neighborhood and prohibit, prohibiting that, that was what we were looking for in the last project. I see that it's on here, so I feel comfortable that a lot of the concerns are addressed. And I believe, as John alluded to, a lot of the, the presentation or a lot of the concerns have been addressed with what's going on here. So I appreciate the conversation this evening, and I do support that modification to Condition Eight.
Mr. Villanueva?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Initially, I had a lot of concerns about the noise and activity from the washing and the vacuuming and the, you know, in and out, the traffic coming in and out. I think with today's presentation, those concerns have been addressed. I'm fine with the employee parking. I think that very much mitigates the noise and the impact to the neighbors, and given the, the trees and the fence and all of that, I think, I think most of my, or all of my concerns have actually been addressed, so thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Draculich?
I'm in alignment with my fellow commissioners here. A lot of good conditions have been added and met. I'm happy with that. And now that we've had almost three meetings preparing for this, I've thought a lot about the owners, and sometimes I think about these projects to where if we don't have this project, what would come? And with a site like this, I think this is one of the better uses. There was a lot worse uses or projects that could really impact the neighbor, so I'm happy with what I'm seeing here.
Mr. Gower? Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, on a similar tone as Commissioner Draculich, I think a lot about the use and, and just wanted to follow up with a comment about my line of questioning with the applicant and with staff. You know, frankly, I've been a planner in this region for 15 years, and my vision for the South Virginia Street Corridor has been shaped by plans developed over that time for that corridor. And just fundamentally, this project is in opposition with that vision, but over time, that vision has changed, as Nathan articulated in his presentation. So just being frank, it's, it's difficult for me to reconcile the use and the previous, you know, vision for the corridor with what's being proposed as essentially a giant parking lot with a 96,000-square-foot building in the middle of it. It's a use that is going to, I believe, perpetuate in this corridor to the point where I think in 15 years, we're essentially going to be looking at a corridor that looks a lot like Kitski Lane. And so I think we need to consider, as these projects come through, whether that is indeed consistent with the master plan. For me, I still have trouble making that finding with our current master plan based on, you know, John mentioned it in his, in his presentation, the Urban Heat Island. It's frankly, from a lot of perspectives, related to, you know, sustainability and all the things that we're trying to do positively in that sense, it's, it's in conflict with that. So just wanting to be open and transparent with my thought process and as it relates to the two findings, one and two, for each of the, the use and the general findings. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to articulate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Commissioner Veltro, did you have any discussion?
Yeah. Commissioner Gower, I do appreciate that perspective, and, you know, as I'm hearing this application, I was kind of thinking what it would look like if there were a different type of development there. And I guess where I'm stuck is, I don't necessarily think we should be able to tell an applicant that owns a piece of property or that's developing there what they can do if it's not, if it's consistent with the master plan and permitted. And I struggle to find it inconsistent with the master plan, because I think if the master plan intended it to be a different use, it would have had a more restrictive designation for the, for the land. But because it's not in place, I, I can't make the finding that it's inconsistent with the master plan, given that it's a permitted use under the code. So while I hear what you're saying, and I totally respect your view, but that's why I think I can make the finding, and I think I can make the rest of the findings consistent with what was said by the prior commissioners.
Thank you, commissioners. I really value the expertise that we all bring to this commission. We have a lot of planning experience, we have a lot of other experience, we have architectural experience, legal experience. My biggest problem with this project at the very beginning was the design, it wasn't the use. I think the applicant has made some very positive changes to the project. However, I will not be supporting this project because I will not be able to make the CUP finding number six for, the conditional use permit needs to be, will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. To me, just the fact that somebody felt intimidated by coming to a meeting here- just the fact that somebody felt intimidated by coming to a meeting here is not okay with me. I'm going to use stronger words, but I'm not going to. All we have is the information that was given to us and there was nothing else that was presented. So I feel on this project, the neighbor's health and benefit is not being taken into consideration, especially with somebody feeling intimidated. So those are my thoughts. But again, I appreciate all of the commission's input. And with number eight, I think we have some language for that too. So I guess we're ready to entertain a motion.
Chair, I would like to make a motion in the matter of LDC 2100063. Based on compliance of the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit subject to conditions listed in the staff report, except for condition eight, which shall be eliminated and there shall be an additional condition that the site plan presented by the applicant shall be included and complied with.
Commissioner Draculich, I'll second.
Thank you, we have the motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Veltto?
I appreciate what you said about the kind of parent, either coercion or statements made that were seen as bullying. I'm entirely with you on that, that's completely unacceptable. I guess where I, I don't necessarily know that we can make a denying application based on that finding, just from my perspective. But I appreciate you bringing that up and emphasizing that because that's extremely important.
I guess my only response is to, the residential adjacency was the biggest concern for me. And CUP number six, AMB, I'm not able to make with that information that was provided to us. So, thank you. Any other further discussions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Sorry, can we?
Do you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, could we please, especially since we're wearing masks, hard to tell. Okay, so Taylor?
No. Draculich?
Yes.
Goward?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Veltto?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Yes.
So the vote is four to two and the motion passes. Motion passes, thank you. And now we're going to move on to item 5.3.
Madam President, there'd be a slanderous accusation made.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my name is Ben Farahi.
Can you help me out here, Arlen?
You made a slanderous accusation against the property owner.
Sir, you need to stop.
Sir, you're out of order.
You've been out of order without reaching out to the property owner to see what happened, inquire, and do not make a slanderous accusation that I took anybody on the side.
Madam Chair, this is, this man needs to be removed from the podium.
Because what you've done is not correct and has not been just.
Michelle, can you get security, please?
It's just a slander.
This kind of proves your point, doesn't it?
Okay, with that, we are going to move on to item number 5.3. That's going to be a tough act to follow, Carrie.
It is.
Case number LDC 21-dash, actually, let's wait for Michelle to get back in. Sorry, hold on just a second. Okay, everyone, thank you for your patience. We'll move on to, again, agenda item 5.3, case number LDC 21-00072, Public Safety Center variance. This is a request for a variance to increase allowed fence height, eliminate a required parking lot perimeter, reduce the number of required trees, and reduce the number of required off-street loading spaces. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
We do, thank you. Carrie Kosky, Deputy Director of Public Works, Capital Projects Division. Just before we go into the presentation here, I want to just give you a little bit of background. The Capital Projects Division has provided the oversight for this particular project and we've worked very closely with the Reno Police Department. But as of this week, we have been reviewing a lot of the costs for the project and they are significantly higher than what we originally expected. Big surprise, right? We're seeing high costs on everything. So as condition number two, I would just like to put on the record that we would like to extend the permitting to up to four years because the city will probably need some additional time to gather the funding needed to go forward with this project. So that was my plug for some additional time. And now I'm going to turn it over to Justin George. He's our senior civil engineer and he is provided, he will provide you with that presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Justin George, Correction, Associate Civil Engineer. I'm the project manager for the city of Reno. And with me tonight is Lieutenant Scott Dugan, who's been our RPD liaison for this project. He's been integral in helping us steer the design of this project to meet the needs of the public. As you may know, the city purchased the old Reno Gazette Journal property in 2009 with the purpose of remodeling it for a new public safety center. And what this public safety center would do would bring many public safety and community services under one roof. Currently, they're spread throughout the city. The improvements include adding site parking to meet the needs of a new public safety center, making improvements to the interior of the building, getting it ready for its new use, and adding a second floor to the warehouse area to increase the usable working space. And also, security features for its new use as a public safety center. One of the main design considerations for this project was the acronym SEPTED. And what that stands for is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. The Reno Police Department did a study and prepared a report for this site to evaluate the whole site for safety cooperations, not only for the staff, but also the public that use this facility. And I want to direct your eyes here to the plan layout. For reference, this is the corner of Coonsley and Sutro Streets. To the south is the renowned medical facilities. To the north is the Truckee River. And diving into those SEPTED concepts, the first concept being natural surveillance. And the focus there is on increased visibility. For example, this would include keeping sightlines open and clear for visibility around the site. This would be like eliminating items such as large trees and shrubs that could potentially hide somebody that's causing a threat. Second concept is natural access control, which is a focus on the entry and exit points. And if you look at the shaded area in yellow, the public parking area, to the northeast of there is that large public plaza area. That's a clear identified safe access point into the facility. Third concept is territorial reinforcement, which is a focus on clearly defining the boundary of the property. That red dashed line in the picture there is the proposed security fence that defines the perimeter of the site. The fourth concept is a focus on how management runs and maintains the facility. So for this site, we did a look at the trees and shrubs and tried to identify type and placement for security. Not only that, but also maintenance. What type of plants and trees on the site wouldn't be in hindrance to visibility should maintenance be deferred. While we're on this slide before we move off, I also want to direct your, or direct your eyes back to the public parking area on the south side of the site there because we're going to come back to that in another slide. So the reason we're here is requesting a variance for a couple of items to the Title 18. And a little background, this project was reviewed and analyzed using Title 18 standards in the existing, in their existence prior to January 13th of 2021. The first item we're asking for a variance on is increasing the fence height in the front yard to eight feet. Second is a reduction in the overall tree count for the site. Third is the elimination of the five-foot-wide landscape strip along Sutro. And fourth is a reduction in the number of loading docks. So that first item, Title 18 limits the size of a fence in a front yard to four and a half feet. We're requesting that to be increased to eight foot tall. And that image there is from our plans. That's the open view steel fence. Design is to inhibit it, somebody from being able to climb over it. So a four and a half foot fence, kind of make it easy for somebody to climb over. Raising that to eight foot would kind of help eliminate that. So in this image here is showing that that type of fence has been installed locally here in town. That's at the US Courthouse and Federal Building on South Virginia Street. Second item we're asking for a variance on is a reduction in the overall tree count. Using those SEPTED concepts, we identified, or we placed 113 trees around the site. That's both utilizing existing trees and planting new trees. Title 18 requirements based on the amount of landscape we have requires 195. So this is a deficit of about 82 trees. Third item we're requesting a variance on is elimination of a five-foot-wide landscape strip along Sutro. And if you look at that image there, the red areas that we have shown next to Sutro Street are the areas where that five-foot-wide landscape strip we're asking to be eliminated on. And these images here, this is north of the driveway, access to the property from Sutro Street. And as you can see in the image on the right, that's the abutment, bridge abutment for the Sutro Street Bridge as it crosses over the Truckee River. So with that being there, it kind of makes it impractical and not feasible to install a five-foot-wide landscape strip there. Looking on the south side of the Sutro Street driveway, this is the existing configuration from the RGJ days. And again, I want to direct you back to that parking area down there on the side. If any of you have been to the current police station, there is no public parking. You're going to have to find a parking spot out on the street, which kind of makes it difficult sometimes to access the services at the Reno Police Station. So what we've did with this site is provided 48 parking spaces and a nice easy access from Sutro and Coonsley for people to actually be able to safely utilize the services at the Public Safety Center. So if we were to install a five-foot-wide landscape strip in that red boxed area on the right, that would eliminate over a quarter of the parking we've provided for the public. So in its place, we've proposed installing a three-foot-tall screening wall behind the new five-foot sidewalk that we're installing. In the plan view there, that blue dashed line is the screening wall. And on the right is a cross section, just giving you another view of what we're looking at here. The final item we're asking for a variance on is a reduction in the number of loading docks. And typical occupancy type B buildings of this size would require four loading docks. We looked at the similar jurisdictions in the area, notably Washoe County Sheriff and Carson City Sheriffs, and they each have one loading dock. So if you see in that red boxed area, we're repurposing two existing loading docks from RGJ for use in this facility, which exceeds the demand that a public safety center type facility would need. That completes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. Kyle? Good to see you again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commission Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the Record, here to present the staff report for the Public Safety Center variance. All right, so Justin gave a really good overview of the project and why they're here. But I just want to explain a little bit more. The main reason, so the, this facility is currently under review, under permit. And it was put on hold because it met a certain threshold of code, which requires the entire site to come into conformance with landscaping. And that's based on the assessed value of the property. And if, once you hit 40% of that with your improvements, you have to bring the site into conformance. Hence why we're here tonight. So the request is for variance for fence height, parking lot landscape edge, required trees, and off-street loading spaces. Justin already covered kind of the background of the site when it was purchased by the city. It, I just do want to mention that obviously the site is fully developed. So that was a heavy consideration from staff in looking at this variance and especially in regards to the landscaping. The key issues are really the unique nature of the use. So the public, this is a public safety use. One of the findings, finding C, says that the variance cannot be detrimental to the public health or public safety. Right? So this is actually the opposite of that. This is a public safety use that is needed for public safety. And then obviously revitalization and reuse of the site. Justin covered the bridge overpass there that just, in all honesty, doesn't make sense for a parking lot landscape edge. It doesn't meet the intent of what that is for. It would, the trees would not work well there next to the wall. That wall is needed for pedestrian safety across the bridge. And so I'll just move on right into landscaping. So the entire site is being brought into conformance with landscaping for the existing site, which is really quite impressive given that it's fully developed. So they've, the applicant is, the city has proposed a substantial amount of upgrades, trees and shrubs to bring the site into conformance as much as possible. And so, the, as Justin noted, what's really being requested is on the left hand of your screen here, that Sutro site and that landscape strip that's required around the parking lot area. Due to the existing slope of the bridge, the noted concerns with the SEPTED and RPD comments that we received that are in the staff report, the fact that this is a public safety use, needs good visibility, et cetera. And the fact that the applicant has provided parking generation numbers that the number of parking spaces is really necessary for this use. And they were able to demonstrate that. And so, as Justin noted, or as Carrie noted, the, you know, landscape strip would eliminate some of that. Okay, fencing, so this is the display on fencing. Code allows for only a four and a half foot tall fence in the front yard. So that's all this area in front of the building, in between the street and building, on both sides. So, as noted again in the RPD comments and the SEPTED report, primarily the RPD comments, there's been a, and as the public probably knows, been some issues with crime and targeted sort of attacks on the, in recent history, on the current RPD building. So that is really a really critical part of this whole piece and getting this to function and keep not only city assets safe, but also keeping the personnel safe. Off-street loading, I, Justin touched really- Justin touched really, really well on this and kind of showed you that the demand based on like facilities is just the, the need for four loading spaces for a public safety center is not needed. That is more geared towards warehouse, distribution, retail, other types of commercial uses that are going to take lots of delivery and shipping. So with that being said, just again, wanted to highlight some of the findings. And I think staff has made a pretty good argument in the, in the staff court that these, these requirements that code presents really do create an extraordinary and exceptional situation that would create a practical difficulty on the property owner, especially given the fact that it's, the site's being revitalized and it's already fully developed. And so that being said, I was able to make all the applicable findings and recommend the planning commission approve the project. Here for any questions you have.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. Let's have disclosures and we'll start on this side of the room with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site and I don't think we received any emails on this.
Commissioner Draxler, same disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, I visited the site. I also represent the Reno Police Protective Association and sit on the Reno Police Chiefs Advisory Board. I've consulted with council and been advised that there's no conflict of interest because there's no pecuniary interest involved.
Commissioner Villanueva? No disclosures.
Commissioner Gower, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures. I'm familiar with the site. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item?
There was no public comment received or any voicemails received.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or the applicant's representative. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle, I'll start with you. A couple of quick questions. So I understand that this is being reviewed under the old code, which is, is that due to when it came in? Because it seems odd that a city project would be not using the latest city code. Do you, you want to, you want to address that?
It was because of COVID. We put it on delay because of COVID. So it's been about a year and a half.
Gotcha.
So that makes sense. Thanks Kerry for clarifying. So the, as I had mentioned in my presentation, that the permit has been submitted for quite a while. And it was before, actually this project has been in the design phase for quite some time. So it's not over, over a year and a half and before COVID, the design process started. And so they, they began designing under the old code.
Okay. So this comes back to your comment about, you know, it's been in the process and it was determined at the valuation point that that's why we're, we're here looking at this.
Yes, exactly.
And then I guess the second question is that we're looking at this. My question would be, are a lot of these things that we're dealing with here with, that we're asking for variances on, would any of those be different if this site had a public facility zoning to it, a PF zone? Would that change any of these requirements with respect to landscape, loading dock, any of those items?
No, no, it wouldn't. The, the the fence height, that is a general fence height requirement for non, for non-residential landscaping, parking lot edge applies across the board. And the same with the loading.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have some other questions, but I'm going to, they're more design oriented. So I'll turn them over to the commission. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kyle.
Mister's other questions? Mr. Villanueva?
Question, I think this is appropriate for the applicant. Are you all, is the applicant going to preserve a lot of the trees that are currently on site? Or are you, or is the applicant going to remove trees and then plant new trees in order to comply with code?
It's a combination of both. We've reviewed the site with the urban forester. He's identified trees that are of high priority. We've kept as many of the high priority trees as we can that fit into that layout you see on the plan there. There are a couple that inhibited some of the operations of the facility that have to go. But we have maintained the majority or quite a few of the, the high priority trees identified by the urban forester.
Okay. And then I'm looking at exhibit, I think it's D, 5.3 point D. You had it, and you know what? This might actually be for Kyle because I think he had it up, the planner. It was I have it as 5.3 point D. With the red. Yeah, that one. So you said that the, the eight foot fence, that's going to be just around the building or is it that red outline?
It's the red outline.
It is a red outline. Okay. Okay. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Kyle, if I either have a quick question for you before we get to design, are you okay with that for your extension timeframe?
Yeah, sorry. I meant to add that to my presentation. Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, given the the climate in the building industry. I think that that's appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand everything that's being presented to us this evening, but I guess I have a, I have a question and I appreciated the image showing this fence existing elsewhere. My concern is I'm, I'm just looking at the circulation and I'm looking at Coonsley and Sutro and I'm, I'm trying, this is a little bit beyond what we're looking at here, but it kind of tends to my question. In terms of the, the public access to the public parking, Coonsley is a one-way street. Sutro doesn't have a left-hand turn lane currently. So that public parking area access is a little bit limited. So no matter how you approach this building, you're going to be seeing an eight foot tall fence with pretty sparse vegetation in front of it, based on the SEPTED requirements. And so I guess what I'm, I'm wondering and looking at this layout is if there's been a consideration, especially on Coonsley, to have that portion of fencing maybe a less, a bit less on the institutional side. The thing about the courthouse that you demonstrated in your example is that that fencing wraps around the backside of the building. The front side of the building is open. There's no fencing on it. The entrance is clear and it's, it's dealt with in a different situation. Obviously we're not in the same situation here because you have parking. But you're, you're basically by putting that type of fencing along that entire frontage, it, it's, it's really, I think it's a challenging statement that we're making about that building. And I guess I'm questioning if there is any discussion about some other type of, maybe not chain link fencing, but you know, some kind of wrought iron fencing that may still be, you know, six feet tall, eight feet tall, that doesn't have, you know, an eight foot spike bowing out to the, you know, the street. So maybe that's not a question for you, Kyle. It sounds like I'm, I'm asking for the development. If we're looking at approving a fence, I understand the rationale for it. I just have a concern about that much of that fence on that entire elevation.
Yeah. One thing I, I will just chime in on real quick. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, is if you see that, that frontage along Coonsley, that red line where the fence is, it's actually behind the landscape area. So you're, you're really, at the end of the day, when, when these trees mature, you're really not going to be able to see much of that fence. Because these trees are going to be well above eight feet. And so that, the landscaping is
But Kyle, I would, I would fight that with the fact that we heard that we don't want anything low. So I'm going to have an eight foot plus trunk. So I'm going to see nothing but fence and then canopy above it. So that's, that's my, my concern. And that was the same situation with the image that we saw. You saw fence. You know, in that case, the building was much taller behind it. In this case, we're, we're basically putting a fence forward on our public facility.
Yeah. And maybe I'll defer to the applicant on kind of the SEPTED view of that and kind of how that, how that's looked at and and why they chose this particular fence. I'm, I'm not sure, but
Okay. Thank you.
Justin George, Associate Civil Engineer. Clarification on Coonsley Street. Prior to COVID, we did work with RTC on realigning that street. So that section east of Sutro and Kerman is now a two-way street with a left turn or a center turn lane. So it's no longer that one-way, three-lane configuration. So we looked at that in consideration on how the site is accessed. And that's why the, the public parking is located where you see it on the corner there. So you can have access to it in multiple directions without, you know, having to go around the block doing that one-way street couplet. And I just wanted to iterate, iterate what Kyle was saying is that the, the fence is located at the back of that landscape strip. Selection of the trees, like you said, is for trees that aren't going to inhibit that site. Then I wanted to refer to Lieutenant Dugan on the necessity of an eight foot tall security fence for a facility like this.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to hear from the expert. That's awesome.
All right. Good evening. Lieutenant Scott Dugan with the Reno Police Department. So when you look at the building and the reason why the fence goes around the entire perimeter, and then you compare that to the access point to the public, it does seem like there's a pinch point and it's, and it's limiting the, I guess approachability. And that's a concern for us. Certainly we want to be an approachable community-engaged police department. However, if we start lowering the fence height at any given point, then we create a weakness. And we have not reinforced the windows around the facility because of cost. We would ideally like to have bulletproof windows all the way around, but it's very cost prohibitive. So in our experience with the challenges that we've had historically and recently with the various events that happened last year, we found that if we, if we create opportunities for people to exploit, they will. And having a taller fence decreases the scalability of it. It creates time for someone to try to get over. When a fence is curved, it makes it much more difficult. But even the height alone creates more time for us to react to anyone that's trying to gain access. So if we were to create a, a lower fence at, you know, the southwest corner of it so that it's more approachable or less institutional looking, we're just creating an easier opportunity for someone to gain access. We've had a number of our employees over time that have been either stalked or have had their property damaged and we are now providing secure parking for our employees for the first time. Plus we have all of our police vehicles in there that allow us to provide a service to the community. So if those vehicles are damaged or accessed by people, and we've had people climb into our current motor pool right now because the fence is just a chain link fence, a standard six foot high, it's much easier to get over that fence. And we've had a number of problems over the year because of that. So we've, we've tried to beef it up to, to meet the needs of protecting not only the, the property that will be within the confines of that fence, but our staff. And given, you know, a fortunate potential attack on this facility in the future, that time is going to be very precious to the safety of the people in there. The most recent riot that we had, people were able to breach the front doors. They were throwing rocks into the motor pool, damaging vehicles. So we're trying to mitigate that as best we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have one, one more question.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Johnson?
And, and maybe this is one, I'm going to actually put this one to Arlo. Because, and, and Arlo, we've had this conversation at this diocese before about variances and how much, how high the bar is on a variance. And my, my concern on this project is that we have a project that has a demonstrated need for these changes. However, the requirements that we have for a variance are aligned to the site, not to the use. And so my question is, why aren't we looking at this as a change, and that was the reason for the question for public facility? Why aren't we looking at this as a change, as a code-related change for exemptions of public facilities of this nature? Because according to the variance findings, finding A is specific to the site and there's nothing about this site that is problematic for anything other than this use. And that's where I'm having a really hard time wrapping around the variance as the vehicle by which we're doing this. I fully support everything that has been said this evening. But as, from a planning commission standpoint, and the bar that we put on variances because of the, the very nature of them changing and going against the code that we've established, it seems like in a very isolated incident like this, we should be looking more at a code exemption for a public facility of this nature rather than trying to apply a variance to it that's specific to a site with unique constraints that this site doesn't have other than the fact that we have a building that we, or a use that we're putting on it that's got some very unique and specific needs.
For the record, Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. You, you make some good points. This is something that certainly could be addressed in a code section, but it's not in our current code. And truthfully, how many police stations are we going to have? Typically you don't write a citywide ordinance for what's likely to be a single facility in an isolated event. We discussed a lot, the necessary findings. And finding A, specifically finding A, does relate to the site conditions. The exceptional situation in this case is it's already developed. This is not a vacant site where they could move the building back five feet to allow a landscape buffer. If the improvements were not quite as costly, this would not be required at all if we did lesser upgrades to the interior. So it really is a, a unique situation, both in terms of an adaptive reuse project and the site being already developed and really well below code standards. It's coming into much closer conformance. And then the other findings, in particular finding B, relates to peculiar and exceptional difficulties. Sadly, police departments, police officers are under threat throughout the country. We hear about it in the news all the time. And we've seen it right here in the city of Reno, just in the last couple of years. So it is really critically important that we put safety at the forefront so we don't have any sort of attack or loss of life. And that's what makes this a really unique situation. If this was a post office or some other public facility use, we might not be here with the same recommendation. But a, a major police facility, public safety center truly is unique and the already developed nature of the site creates a practical difficulty to come into full code compliance.
Thank you, Arlo. I appreciate that answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Mr. Villanueva?
Hi, yes, thank you. So to add to, well, I guess, yeah, so given what Commissioner Johnson just said, I brought up more questions in my mind. If we, if we allow for this variance because it is, you know, a unique situation, public safety, does it create a slippery slope for other other, I don't know if use is the proper term, but other applicants to be able to do the same because the use is really not distinguishable here?
We don't think so. Perhaps if there was another major police station coming in on an already developed site, there could be some precedent, but that's not the reality. This is a single public safety center for the city of Reno. It truly is a unique situation. So we don't see this being precedent setting. And we likely wouldn't recommend the same for other types of public facility uses that don't have the same type of public safety considerations that we're looking at here.
Okay, thank you. And I do have another question for the applicant officer. I'm sorry, I can't read your name. The officer who just spoke, yes. I have a question for you if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Lieutenant Scott Dugan, Reno PD for the record.
Thank you, thank you. How many incidents, I understand the last year, it's been kind of a unique year. How many incidents would you say you guys have had in some of the other departments within the Reno city that have caused similar problems? And then my second question is, And then my second question is, do and is this the only facility? Or if there are other facilities, do those have eight-foot gates around them?
Well, I think it's important to point out that under the public safety center concept, we are moving our dispatch center, which is currently off-site. It's up north of town off of Par Boulevard, under this roof. We're also moving our off-site evidence facilities under this roof. So we'll have all of our evidence stored in these locations. So again, further need for the security to protect the the evidence as well as the personnel and the 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 system of dispatch, the 911 center for the for the city. And to answer your question, as far as the other buildings around town, we have a a couple substations that are housed, like ones inside of a fire station, for example. And the fire station doesn't have this same type of security. But it's also an off-site location that's only temporarily occupied for officers, you know, one or two at a time to do reports. This is where we would house all of our police functions, our headquarters, as well as all of our all of our units and all of the different facets of of police services as well as dispatch services will be under this building. So there are no other competing buildings throughout the city. And then in terms of the number of incidents that we've had, I would have to go back over time to come up with an actual number. But I can tell you it's frequent where we have people that have caused threats or made threats or have assaulted our employees. Some of them have been mentally ill, some of them have been arrested and are are upset with us because of that. We've had, you know, year over year, it seems like we have someone that reaches security and makes their way into the motor pool. We've had vehicles damaged on a regular basis over time. To quantify it, it would be difficult for me to do that. We we haven't had a riot like that at our facility in in the past, prior to 2020. The other riots and insurrections that we've had around town have been in other public areas. They haven't been directed at a a police facility. But again, last year kind of changed things. And we're seeing a different dynamic now and a different attitude towards policing. And it's quite frankly, very concerning. So the more we can do to protect, you know, the staff that work there and and the and the function of our police services for the community and public safety is.
Thank you. And one more question, and that'll be it. Just the the Par Boulevard that the, I guess you said it holds evidence and some of some other does other thing. I didn't hear what the other one was, but it holds evidence and it's a it. Does that have a fence or eight-foot fence around it?
So there's a dispatch center. It's a regional dispatch center. It's located technically off of Spectrum, which is off of Par.
Okay.
And that's across the freeway from from the sheriff's office. And it does have a fence that goes around it, has secure parking for the employees. I don't know the height, the height of that fence, to be honest. But we've had an agreement with the county for, I think, 30 years, and that agreement is unraveling. And we are pulling back our dispatch personnel into our fold and within the new facility when it's built.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioners, are we ready to move into discussion? We'd like to start us off.
Right, Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Okay.
Just because. I have a question about the the four-year time limit on this. And if I'm reading and understanding it right, Kyle. If the reason we're here is that the project's in for building permit already, but it can't get a permit until it gets the variance. So the variance that's in here indicates that all permits have to be applied for within 18 months. I guess I'm trying to understand what we need to change.
Commissioner, I might be able to cover that one. The there are also timelines that don't involve planning commission cases where building permits require activity to occur every six months. And these cost concerns have newly emerged. So the concern is if if it's unaffordable essentially, and the city doesn't have enough money to build this, and it, we either have to wait for better costs or raise additional funds, this would likely be invalidated during that process if we stuck with the standard 18-month timeframe. So that's why we're really supportive of an extended timeframe. That's done periodically on various cases for for certain circumstances. So we're we're supportive of that request.
So, and I understand that, but let me take another approach to that. If it has to come back because of funding issues, are we going to be at a point where the funding issues drop this down to the point where this isn't required? I guess I'm trying to, we're basically allowing for an acceptance of this according to the current code in perpetuity for four years when it sounds like the plans could change. And I don't think these plans are going to change. I guess I'm just trying to understand how the four-year requirement relates to a building permit requirement that we're not even seeing. So we're basically approving this good for four years as opposed to 18 months as we normally do.
That's the request, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, any discussion? I'm ready for a motion. Commissioner Veltow?
In the matter of LDC 2100072, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Draculich.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I have a point of clarification? Does that motion include the 48-month request and condition number two?
My apologies. Thank you, Carl. Yes, it does.
Discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting the motion. However, I'm supporting it because it's a unique situation for the police. I do not believe that the variance standards have been met in the way that they're written now. However, I do not see another vehicle open to us for this short of a targeted code amendment, which there does not seem to be any appetite for. So I appreciate the discussion and the answers this evening. I do have some concerns, but I will ultimately be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. That was a nay by Commissioner Villanueva? Okay, so motion carries. One, two, three, four, five to, six to one, yes? Five to one. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Okay, does anybody need a break? Are we good to move on? Shell, you good? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 5.1 now. This is case number TXT 200002, packaged alcohol beverage sales. This is a request to amend the Reno Municipal Code Title 18. Do we have a presentation from the applicant or from the city of Reno?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Lance Ferrato, the Business Relations Program Manager for the city. This item's proposed text amendment to Title 18, being presented in conjunction with proposed Title V amendment specific to package alcohol sales in certain businesses throughout the city. The changes would affect some new businesses citywide, but the brunt of the changes are focused on the downtown area and the East Fourth Street corridor. Obviously, Title V is not in this commission's purview. However, it's a comprehensive change, and it should be heard in its entirety. I know the commission doesn't necessarily know the ins and outs of the business licensing world. So if you have any questions, you're in, that's pleasing her up. So concerns have been identified related to the public health and safety with regard to packaged alcohol and packaged wine and beer licenses, more commonly known as liquor stores. Significant concerns have included crime, public intoxication, panhandling, littering, broken glass, public urination, and a general lack of fresh food. For these reasons, City Council has asked staff to investigate. So back in 2016, council directed staff to research best practices for regulating these licenses. Over the next couple of years, discussions and research took place. In 2019, council expressed a desire to consider a moratorium so that these regulations could be finalized. In May of 19, that moratorium was established. So basically, this means that the city will not accept applications unless certain criteria is met based on specific exceptions built into that moratorium. Updates and extensions have been approved during COVID-19, and the moratorium expires December 31, 2020, 2021, excuse me. So some of the strategies to address these issues would be to enhance criteria for city council to review applications and exercise more discretion. Establish primary and accessory land use categories, allowed locations, review procedures, and use-specific standards, as well as expand limitations for the licensees in newly-defined areas. So here's a broad illustration of the area requirements here. As I go through the next few slides, you'll see some more detailed information. But this is a good reference to look back at as we go through these. And if you look back in your materials and have questions, obviously, you can you can peek at this at this graphic as well. But the general concept here is we have radiating requirements reaching outward, most stringent in the downtown area, and then expanding citywide in some cases. So as I said, we'll discuss these a little bit more specifically. So the First Amendment creates land use standards for packaged alcohol sales as a primary use. It'd be allowed in certain mixed-use areas, employment districts. Use-specific standards include conditional use of conditional use permit processing requirements, so compliance with Title V, access from arterial and collector streets, and identification of nearby residential zones, sensitive uses to be concerned, would be considered during these processes. Secondly, it creates land use standards for packaged alcohol sales as an accessory use. These would be allowed in conjunction with general stores, convenience stores, food processing, restaurants, bars, hotels with non-restricted gaming, and pharmacies. To continue on that same, on that same requirement, a CUP would be required for businesses within the MD, NC, and MF30 zoning districts and when the use is within 500 feet of the following. The downtown restricted alcohol license area, which will be, we'll show a graphic shortly. The East Fourth Street corridor buffer area. Residentially zoned properties, primary schools, secondary schools, public parks, and any drug abuse and alcohol facilities that are outlined per NRS. A couple of the less substantive amendments include updates to the to the table of allowed uses, creating definitions of general retail, packaged alcohol sales as a primary commercial use, and packaged alcohol sales accessory to a primary use. Lastly, SafeScape regulations will be removed from Title 18 and placed in Title V for more more appropriate applicability for licensees reviewing it and for enforcement. Moving on to to the Title V changes, Alex Woodley is going to discuss those a little more thoroughly.
Thank you. Good evening. Alex Woodley, Assistant Director of Neighborhood Services. So I'm going to follow along with the subsequent slides. Just to give you an idea of what you have before you today is primarily Title 18, of course, under the planning commission. But we wanted to give you an overview of some of the changes that we're implementing in Title V, Chapter V, specifically 5.07 related to alcohol sales. So one of the requests that we have from, we've received from the council was the ability to have more discretion with regards to approving these licenses. Unfortunately, years passed, there would be some questions or concerns with new liquor licenses and the inability for the council to put conditions or have specific questions. We told them there were only one or two criterias that they could deny a license and that they weren't allowed to give conditions based on the current code, the way it's written in Title V. So one of the main changes we made was to reinforce their ability to exercise discretion in their approvals and their conditions. One of the other things that, major changes that we have is regarded to regarding the restricted area. We have a current restricted area within the downtown. As stated earlier, you heard about SafeScape. We have specific regulations and restrictions related to those businesses within that buffer area. So what we've done is we've enhanced that buffer area. One of the biggest concerns that you always hear of is the situation where where we create these restrictions in here, but then right outside of that border, you'll have, the problem will continue. The concern was the impacts that we have for the downtown area. We wanted to make sure that we didn't have that whatever those negative impacts are, that they would actually exist right across the street from the locations that we're trying to minimize and mitigate those issues. So that's why we have the 1,000-foot buffer to ensure that even though the area that's identified right now for the downtown, that we also have in consideration if, for whatever reason, something were to occur within proximity or to come in that the day that new business would also fall under those requirements. One of the biggest complaints we've had from those that are affected by any restrictions is my competitor has moved across the street from me, and now I have this unfair treatment of the regulations. So we also have, as stated earlier, the regulations from Title 18. The SafeScape is now in Title V, which makes it easier for the compliance officers and business license and code enforcement, and even for the business owners when they come in looking, researching the information related to their alcohol license. Now, all those restrictions and regulations are in the same chapter that they're reading. Unbeknownst to them in the past, that they would have to go to Title 18 and look for those restrictions that apply. So that makes it a lot easier. And of course, we have the 18-month compliance to, with the idea that we would be giving the existing owners significant amount of time to come into compliance with the current restrictions that we've created, the new regulations. Security is one of the major requirements that we have for the downtown. For, as you can see right now, we have hot August nights. We have a lot of activity in the downtown area. When you look at the city as a whole, the entire city, we all know, I think it's common knowledge that most of our activity with our police department and fire department is within our downtown core. So one of the concerns we have is security and safety, particularly after hours, late at night, and over until 05:00 in the next day. So that's one of the requirements that we added there was that if you're going to be open past 11:00 midnight to have a security personnel with the clerk that's working there on-site. Here is an actual display, visual laid for you for the buffer. The green is the existing, and the orange is the proposed. And then the shaded area in orange is the buffer that goes along with it. And then taking into consideration all the investments that have been occurring on East Fourth Street, not to mention the fact that we have the new CARES campus that we've expanded over there. We wanted to make sure that the same restrictions and requirements and upgrades in our SafeScape requirements, that it would also extend far east to Fourth Street. Because what we didn't want to do was, whatever negative impacts we had in the area, that it would just be shifted over to our new CARES campus area. One of the other items that we implemented was the requirement for perishable food. Many of us here are familiar with the food desert concept. And that's something that the city council wanted to make sure that we didn't have in our downtown area. We do have an enhanced number and influx of residents in the downtown area. So we wanted to make sure that we had at least a mandate for these areas that may be perceived to be convenience stores slash liquor stores. We wanted to make sure, the council wanted to make sure that there is fresh food at those stores. This will also apply in Title 18 for the rest of the city as well. But this particular portion is related to the the downtown area. The prohibited products, this was a concept that we identified in other cities and other states. Predominantly, you'll see this in lower-income neighborhoods where the negative impacts of the influx or excessive liquor stores within an area, neighborhoods, they would create these restrictions. This particular restriction is, the overall goal is to minimize or remove the ongoing sales of the individual beers or the individual single shots that we tend to find in the alleys and in the downtown. Unfortunately, many of our inebriated individuals that we find in the downtown areas or individuals that pass out or that we've dealt with through our police department or EMS or fire, these individuals, they tend to purchase a lot of these single-sale containers of alcohol. The idea being that the sales can continue to exist, but in in larger quantities, at least in a four-pack for beer and in a quarter of a fifth for actual hard liquor. So you wouldn't be seeing the the influx of those 99-cent shots throughout the downtown area. We also made some minor changes for compliance reviews to facilitate the ability to follow up on any non-compliance of the chapter related to alcohol. Since we created the expansion, we did add an additional four licenses that were absorbed in that new area. We didn't want them to be negatively impacted by the current restriction because right now, per the code, it says, this is from decades ago, there was a previous council desire to have no more than a total of 14 packaged liquor licenses in the downtown area. Currently, we have approximately 22. Then, and ultimately here, we have the good standing provision, which was to have the ability to exempt certain stores that are doing everything appropriately and that have no violations. Perfect example would be the Urban Market in Third Street Flats. This is a market that has predominantly food for sale, which is something that we want, the city council wanted to see in the downtown area as more of a market market as opposed to more of a liquor store. And provide those business owners in good standing the ability. And provide those business owners in good standing the ability to pursue a package liquor license. Once again, of course, they would have to go before the city council for approval. And then here are some other minor amendments, different sections of the Title 5.07. These are specifically related to some language cleanup to facilitate the reading, the enforcement, and the interpretation of the codes. So thus far, as it relates to public comment, it was, the notice was published per the NRS requirements and in the public newspaper back in May of this year. A letter was sent directly to 300 affected businesses. We conducted a virtual workshop in addition to a personal workshop, and then prior to COVID-19, of course, in 2020, we did have several in-person workshops as well. So we've had multiple opportunities to gather information and input from business owners and other representatives of the community. The primary concerns primarily from the businesses was a loss of revenue for single-serve alcoholic beverage products, and then the additional cost of employing a security individual to work between the hours of 11:00 PM and 0600, which was the initial proposed ordinance. So what we did was, in reflection of that input, staff made the change from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM, reducing two hours of that cost. That is what we intend to present to this council. We also created the compliance deadline of 18 months to provide an opportunity for businesses, whether it's to change their business model or adjust to the new requirements, and also reduce the initial proposal. The initial proposal was 30% of the floor area for fresh food. So we did reduce that to 10, and then also removed the restrictions of selling malt. Previously, in the SafeScape, they were prohibited from selling malt beverages in excess of 16 ounces, so we did remove that particular requirement. So at this point, staff recommends the Title 18 text amendment to be approved and allow staff to move forward to present before the city council for adoption. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. That's a lot of information. I'm going to ask if, Arlo, if you don't mind just giving us a very brief, very brief synopsis of what Planning Commission is being asked to do here. We heard some stuff with Title V and Title 18, and maybe just help us stay in our lane here.
Do you want to do disclosures or public comment?
I thought we would add this as part of the presentation, and then we'll go through and do that. Is that okay with everybody? Okay.
The Planning Commission's review, pure view, are the amendments to Title 18. The team felt it was important, because this is an integrated package, to brief and present to the Planning Commission the full scope of the proposals. I think you heard that the more controversial topics are within that Title V section. There's a different process required for Title V amendments that include business impact statements. So this is kind of a merger of both processes, but we just wanted everyone to be fully informed. So the recommendation that's in front of you is review and a recommendation of approval for Title 18 amendments, and then the whole package would go up to the city council.
Great. Thank you, Arlo. Commissioners, let's do disclosures. Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, I did reach out to a local brewery owner to see if they had any concerns, but other than that, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, I spoke to an interested party who owns a store in downtown.
Commissioner Dracula, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item?
Public comment was received and entered as part of the record. No voicemails were received, and no comment cards were received.
Not to embarrass you, but what is your name? I'm sorry.
Tony.
Tony. Okay. Thank you, Tony. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to make public comment on this item? Okay, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant. Commissioner Velto.
Yes, this question is actually for Arlo. I want to follow up on what the chairman woman was asking. Is, so our role is to review the amendments to Title 18. Do the provisions of Title V go into effect regardless of us voting on Title 18? Or are they dependent on us approving the changes to Title 18?
Any change has to be approved by city council. I'll start with that. So whatever goes into effect will be whatever they end up approving. The Title V amendments could work without amendments to Title 18. Title 18 essentially establishes a differentiation between liquor stores and other forms of retail. So that's really the meat of what you're looking at, and a discretionary review process that might not otherwise be required if they weren't selling liquor.
Okay. So is it fair to say that some of these changes at Title V, which deal with single-serve alcohol, there'd be a limit placed on stores in downtown even if we were to not recommend approval to the council?
Yes, certainly, they could approve the Title V amendments. They would work just fine if we left Title 18 just how it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dracula.
Commissioner Dracula, thanks, Madam Chair. This question is for Mr. Woodley. Probably a tough question. Do we have an understanding of how many businesses will be directly significantly impacted? Obviously, we have an 18-month timeline, and second question with that, when would that clock start ticking?
As it relates to the downtown area, we're looking at approximately 14, is it, I think, is it 14 or 20 in the area? It would be 20, including the additional four at this time. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the clock would start upon the second reading by the city council.
Thank you. And then one last one. I know you guys have been in communication with these business owners, obviously. You know, is there any help that the city can provide? Obviously, what you guys have stated, are they asking for anything that we can physically help with to help that transition? Or is this something they're more or less independent on that transition inside their business?
They're independent on this portion of the business, considering the fact that the the one portion of the alcohol that we're referring to appears to be a smaller portion. This isn't the size, these businesses aren't the size of a benz liquor, so to speak. So the 18 months appears to be adequate time. However, this doesn't preclude their ability, when we go before the council, to make any requests specific to the council, directly to the council. And the council does have that discretion at that time to make any changes.
Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, if I can interrupt really quickly. I just, on that question that I helped Alex answer about the 20 in the cap area, the total direct impact of licensees in the buffer area as well, that would go up to, there's 20 in the buffer area and there's 20 out. So it's 40 total that would be impacted by this. The ones inside the buffer that are 20 are already adhering to SafeScape standards in some fashion right now, but they would be new standards added to that as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to know the whole area, so appreciate that. 40. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Villanueva.
Okay, great. So I believe, actually, the gentleman that was just up here, I didn't catch her name. I think you would be the most appropriate.
Lance Ferrato.
Hi. Okay, so I understand this is predominantly for liquor stores, convenience stores. I get that, and I also understand that we're only looking at Chapter 18, the development code. Will, it was unclear to me, in the development code, I'm looking at the amendment to, it's not specific here, but basically, I'm trying to figure out if the unintended consequence could impact breweries only in the respect that some of them do sell, you know, they manufacture their own beer, so sometimes they'll sell that kind of packaged alcohol, because it's no longer packaged liquor, it's alcohol. Looked at the definition, and so I just wanted to be clear that there was no unintended consequences there, since I know they're probably not supposed to get caught up in this, but just wanted to check with you.
That's correct. There are provisions to limit those standards on licensees like that. If there are on-premise licenses already at that location, if you can have an on-premise beer and wine or on-premise liquor license, then your off-premises accessory to that, and it's an exception in the rule. So the breweries wouldn't be affected as long as they are serving beer on-site, and they're also selling packaged alcohol, it doesn't affect them.
And does it matter if it's packaged alcohol that they're not brewing on-site? So if it's someone else's brewery's packaged liquor or packaged alcohol that they're selling, even though they do brew their own stuff and they sell their own stuff, if they're selling other folks', other breweries' packaged liquor?
The product wouldn't matter, it's the licenses that they're.
Okay, perfect. That's cool.
Commissioner Gower.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for staff, I'm looking at Section D under all districts related to the 10% of the retail floor area devoted to fresh foods. How does staff define fresh or frozen food?
Yes, sir. Alex Woodley, for the record. I can read you, we defined it in the code in Title V and refer to it in Title V. If you don't mind, I can read it to you.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Fresh or frozen perishable food means those foods likely to spoil, decay, or become unsafe to consume if not kept refrigerated or frozen. Examples of foods that must be kept refrigerated for safety include, but are not limited to, fruits, vegetables, egg, meat, poultry, seafood, and dairy products. Fresh food may also include foods that have extended expiration dates, including, but not limited to, fruits and vegetables not requiring refrigeration, canned food, condiments, dried meat, and bakery items. And we did use the USDA definition of fresh food. We did use that as a template to create this definition.
So based on that definition, staff is comfortable that they're meeting the intent, I believe, of council that they're providing a healthy food option for residents and not just floor space essentially for like some Haagen-Dazs bars, essentially, that's not a healthy food option.
That is correct. Yes, sir. That is the intent. Yes, sir. And that's why we identified canned fruit as well, because we didn't want it to be just only the fresh fruit, but also take that into consideration. But we wanted to make sure that processed food wasn't considered fresh food.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I do have a follow-up question. A little bit further down. Alex, the, under additional review based on location with the 500-foot buffer consideration for the CUP. Question one, how was that 500-foot buffer determined relative to those uses? And was there consideration of, instead of requiring a CUP essentially prohibiting location within 500 feet of those uses that are listed?
So with regards to the prohibiting, that is one of the options, discretion that the city council does have. So they will have the ability to make that determination. With regards to the measurement, I can't recall, I don't know if Arlo can assist me, if it's door-to-door or if it's property line?
It's direct measure, not a walking distance, and it's door-to-door, I believe. Correct, Lance?
Arlo, was the, or Alex, was there consideration of a potentially larger CUP or prohibition buffer area? And I guess what was the rationale for 500 feet versus 1,000 feet or something else?
Yeah, I should just say, a ton of staff time went into this and meeting with a ton of different businesses, and these issues are complex. Yes, that was thought through a lot. The reason a prohibition's not proposed is that could impact a lot of beneficial businesses. I mean, you think about a neighborhood market, a 7-Eleven that may also sell alcohol. Strictly prohibiting those within 500 feet of residential areas and parks, one would render a whole bunch of businesses non-conforming. And it also would probably eliminate some really good sites for neighborhood commercial uses within walking distance. So that's where we landed on this discretionary review process. I will add, there was also discussion of, do we need to touch Title 18? Should this be strictly a land use or a business licensing process in consideration, straight with the city council? We did get a fair bit of input that, you know, essentially liquor stores are different than general retail and have different types of uses, and probably should be called out differently and warrant a discretionary review in certain areas. So that's where the staff team kind of landed on the recommendation that's in front of you.
And so just to follow up on the 500-foot determination, so it was staff's opinion based on those discussions and assuming some research that the potential for impacts on those uses primary and secondary schools, for example, is the biggest concern is for those type of uses within 500 feet, but it's lesser beyond that distance?
Generally, I'm not going to represent that there's a perfect right or wrong answer here, you know, 300 feet, 800 feet. There's kind of a range, but basically, when you get beyond 500 feet, you're pretty far away from a business. You don't have the direct impacts of, you know, the parking lot and people hanging out in front of the business. And we tried to address the safety concerns without being unduly burdensome on small businesses. So that's kind of where 500-foot landed.
And if I can add as well, Arlo, at Arlo's direction, we did reach out to Henderson, North Las Vegas and Las Vegas, and they had some 300 feet, but the majority was in fact 500 feet. So we did use that as a baseline as well. But then we came back and looked directly for our particular area to make sure, and then based on what Arlo just shared, that's how we landed with the 500 feet.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the answer.
Arlo, I've heard you say discretionary review a couple times. That means that this does not have, these things don't have to come to Planning Commission, correct? For the most part?
The conditional use permit, which is what I'm referring to as discretionary review, those would come to Planning Commission as land use approval. So any primary use, you think of a Total Lines or a Benz Liquor where that's what they sell, those would require CUPs under this process, as would accessory sales within the 500-foot distance of those sensitive uses. So this will trigger additional conditional use permit requirements if approved that don't currently exist today.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, that, Arlo's response led right to the questions that I had. I understand a purpose-built situation where, you know, we've got a building permit application, a development, there's going to be a conditional use permit expectation. But you bring up the accessory use or a situation where you could be going into a speculative situation or an existing strip mall or something like that where an applicant may just be, you know, getting a business license. How is the, is there a precedent for a situation like this where there's really no need for maybe a building permit, even just a straight building, a straight business license? That, how's the review process working at business license that then kicks it back to discretionary review? And the follow-up to that is, are we, is that process in place? And are we adding a burden? I mean, what's the expectation in terms of the number of these that we would be processing on a yearly basis, if we even know that?
Oh, the first question, we do have a process. Every business license application for these privileged business licenses is reviewed by planning staff. And oftentimes, there are requirements, they're also reviewed by building staff. So if you have, essentially, it's a change of use. If you have a new license application where, say, a clothing store wants to turn into a liquor store, that sometimes triggers building upgrades, it sometimes triggers different zoning code requirements, so that's how it would be caught. There's no amortization provision for these outlying areas like we have downtown. So existing established businesses are effectively grandfathered, so it won't affect anyone that's out there. But if it's a, if there's an existing alcohol license, it can go to a new owner in the same location. But if it's a new proposal to sell alcohol in a location not previously approved in those sensitive areas, it would trigger the conditional use permit.
And any idea on the number of these that, and maybe this is a question.
Probably Lance might have a better flavor for that one.
Lance Ferrato, for the record. It's hard to say. There's been a moratorium on these licenses citywide for quite a while now. There's been a moratorium on these licenses citywide for, for quite a while now, so we do get calls here and there for people inquiring. But I, I, I would hate to throw out a number and be totally inaccurate. There are always businesses looking to sprout up, especially with the development of the city. As it expands, there will probably be more that come in. But yeah, I can't speak to, I, I would, I would not even like to estimate, to be honest.
Okay, that's fair, I appreciate that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions, discussion? Commissioner Villanueva?
So that I may or may not be in line with chapter 18, but we can find out. Lance, is it, what was the need for the security between, was it 10 and 6 or noon and 6? The addition of that?
Actually, I would like to defer that to.
Oh, that's fine, yep.
Just because his experience with code enforcement.
Perfect.
Yes, ma'am, Alex Willey for the record. It, the hours were originally 11:00 PM till 6:00 AM. And staff's recommendation changed based on the input is 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM, reducing it by two hours. And the idea being specifically, specifically in the downtown area. You know, there's a saying, nothing good happens after 11:00 PM. Look, there's concern with the activities that we see when we're working on the weekends and at night of, of the negative behavior that occurs after those hours. So our concern was to make sure that if we had stores selling liquor after those hours that, like many other businesses, all the other businesses downtown that opened at those hours have security, whether it's a bar, restaurant, the casinos, the nightclubs, et cetera. So that was the idea behind it, it was a request from the police department that if they're going to be open at that time of night down in the downtown area selling alcohol, that they should have a security there other than just one clerk.
And that person walks, the individual to his, I read it as though that person walks the individual to their car off premises.
We didn't put those specifics in it, but we did say that that individual would be in addition to the clerk to provide security for the clerk and also anything that occurs on the property during those hours.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry, Commissioners, are we ready for a motion or further discussion?
Madam Chair, a quick question if I could on section M2A. With that list of uses, was that an exhaustive list of uses in staff's opinion? Or are there other considerations of uses that may fall within that CUP review?
That was our best shot at a list of sensitive uses that may be kind of unduly impacted by liquor sales. Again, that's the type of thing where it may not be, there may not be a right or wrong answer on a perfect list. But those are areas where children congregate, where people are receiving treatment for addiction and things of that nature. Or where people live, residential zoning districts. So those are the biggies, those are the issues that have come up from time to time. If there are any others that come to mind, raise them, we'll bring them forward if they come forward in the future, but we think it's a pretty good list.
Is there any merit in having a, for lack of a better term, an other category or, or a situation where staff determines that the use may be potentially, you know, impacted by the location of the business? I just, I'm concerned that these four uses could create a situation where it ties staff's hands if you're looking at a potential, you know, risk scenario and you don't have the uses, you know, I'd specifically identified in code.
Lance Frato for the record, I, I wouldn't be opposed to adding a, you know, or as staff, you know, I, I would hate to be arbitrary in, in reviewing these applications, obviously. But we have built in to Title V, the discretionary review of council as well. So if something did pop up and it was like, oh, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't think about this in the CUP process and it actually made it to council, it would be noted on the application and the staff report that this is within distance of X and it may be for, you know, deeper consideration. So kind of a catch-all by discretionary review by council.
Okay, so I guess I'm relying on you then and staff, I mean, do you, do you feel that it needs to be in Title 18? Or does that process that you're talking about with Title V and council feel like you're, it's, you, you have the safeguard that you're looking for?
I, I think the safeguard's there, I, I, I think that Title V being privileged licenses, we have the authority to ask for a little bit, a little bit more information. Maybe not so much in Title 18, if we get and it says other, I would hate for somebody to come and say, well, that's not written there. This doesn't apply to me, but when it comes to Title V, there's a little bit more ability to do that. So I think staff, I think that it's, it would be fine the way it is and fall into staff.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dragic?
Thank you, Ma- Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Dragic, I, I know this isn't how we do things, but we were talking about security a minute ago and a gentleman in the crowd feels pretty compelled to make a statement, I know we don't usually go about that, but are you willing to let him speak for a brief moment?
Commissioners, would, that's not something we usually do, we usually open up public comment and we close public comment and it's already been closed for this item, so.
That's fine.
Appreciate the consideration.
Yeah, no worries, I just, when we were talking about the security, I didn't know if there was any good comment, but I'm, I'm good with that.
And I think that would probably be a better question for council too.
Yeah, okay, good.
I, I think there will be an opportunity there.
Commissioner Villanueva?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Staff recommends that Title 18 text amendments be approved and presented to city council for adoption.
Commissioner Dragic, your second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? I'm sorry, is there any further discussion?
Can I get clarification on what the motion was?
It's right up there.
It, it should be a planning commission recommendation of approval. Staff recommends to you, I know you read it, we have a typo there, it would be a planning commission recommendation of approval to council.
Oh, sorry. So we have a motion and a second, do you need to redo the motion?
Oh, do I need to redo, I suppose I do, so. Can you repeat what it needs to be? So staff recommends?
Staff recommends the planning commission.
Got it. Got it, okay. Thank you for that, staff recommends the planning commission recommend the Title 18 text amendments be approved and presented to city council for adoption.
Commissioner Dragic, your second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second and the other further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, thank you so much for your time and thank you for being here. Okay, we're going to take a quick 10-minute break, we'll be back here at 8:30, thank you. Okay, we ready, ready? Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order and we're moving on to agenda item 5.2. This is case number LDC21-000563690 Warren Way zoning map amendment. This is a request for a zoning map amendment for single-family residential. Do we have a presentation from the applicant, please?
Yes, we do. Something here. Good evening, for the record, Dave Snellgrove with CFA, I'm the planning and right-of-way manager. Go through presentation fairly quickly, I know you have a heavy agenda and more behind me. The project location, we are mid-block between Moana Lane to the north and Peckham to the south. It's a one-acre parcel, SAPN 02413204. Some of the background and history, we originally submitted this as an MF30 request. Right after we submitted, actually Jeff Borkhardt told me, hey, you want to watch the planning commission hearing from the 22 on Lakeside project? Heard those concerns, understood those concerns and had some conversations with Councilwoman Doer. We looked at changing it to a lower zoning designation. However, at the time, the only residential zoning designation that you could have in the SMU was MF30. What's happened since then is that the, both the planning commission and the city council have approved of a master plan amendment which is going to add MF14 and MF21 both to the SMU designation. We did officially amend our application on the 13th of July. And I attended the NAB last week with presenting this as the MF21 rather than the MF30. So the master plan identifies, this is as suburban mixed use. Some of the key components here, transit service, proximity is one of them, and also proximity to services and employment. So nearest park is about four tenths of a mile away with Moana Park near shopping services. Actually, up at Moana and Lakeside, about 800 feet you can get to those. Grocery shopping is plus or minus a half mile. The former Rayleigh's, and I'm not sure what that is, what the name of the grocery store is now, it's changed again. And then employment, you got the transit corridor and the Atlantis is one of the bigger employers. You have the convention center and a lot of different employment opportunities within about six tenths of a mile from the site. So this is the allowed designations that are currently in the master plan. Once the conformance review happens, the MF30 won't be the only residentially based zoning designation. You will also have the MF14 and MF21 in there. As mentioned before, it needs a regional planning, planning commission conformance review. I'm hopeful that's in the next month and a half, give or take. And after that, then we would move on to city council. All right, next slide. There we go. Transit availability, this is just copy of the map from RTC's map. We've got three lines that are close, it was actually four, because we have Rapid and Route 1 and Route 9 all within about six tenths of a mile. And Route 6 wraps around the Peckham and Moana area and that's within two tenths of a mile to get to bus stops there. These all get to prime locations, the Fourth Street Station in downtown Centennial Plaza. You hop on one of the buses and you can get to each one of these, you can get to Meadowwood Mall, you can get to the southern terminus of Kitzke Lane. This is the existing and proposed zoning map, I'll point out that the SF3 zoning designation actually is non-conformant with the master plan that's there. Our property is located, sandwiched in between two MF21 properties. This MF30 was not built at MF30, it's lower than that. It made sense for MF21 because we have it directly north of us and directly south of us. So that is what we're proposing. Getting to some of the legal findings, one of the key ones is conformance with the master plan, that's inclusive of the regional plan. We're in the tier-one land use area, which is actually the second priority area. It's only that dark blue that's in the transit corridors, the mixed-use core, that's a higher level of priority for development intensification. Kyle did a good job, he covered, covered some of the factors in policies from the master plan. I think some of these are duplicate and some are a little different, but we do feel that we're in strong conformance with the master plan. We do feel that all of the other legal findings can be made. We're in agreement with staff's recommendation and available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much, it was the fastest presentation of the night. Kyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the record. Waiting for my little PowerPoint to come up. Here presenting staff port for 3690 Warren Way zoning map amendment. And I remember the numbers correctly, that's amazing. Okay, so I'll try not to repeat what Dave has already covered. Basically, you have a, a zone change request from SF3, which is single-family, three units per acre to MF20, multifamily, 21 units per acre. Key issues that staff analyzed with this was compatibility with the master plan and compatibility with surrounding zoning districts. Just a little background, Dave kind of touched on this, but this is contingent upon a city council adoption of a master plan text amendment that would allow the MF21 district under the suburban mixed-use master plan designation. It is currently not a conforming zone. So as you can see here, this is a little highlight of the master plan from the area. You can see the entire block west and, or excuse me, to the west, as I'm kind of circling there with my cursor. And also where the subject site is, all suburban mixed use. You have a single-family land use designations down to the south across Peckham, which is a arterial street. Moana is also a major arterial street, Lakeside is also a major arterial street to the west. So surrounded essentially by three arterial streets. So little picture of what the zoning map looks like again. And I don't really have, I, I think Dave did a good job summing this up. Only thing I would add to what he stated was that we're starting to see other requests roll in. We have a provision in the current code that actually incentivizes zone change requests when they're non-conforming to the master plan, to bring them into conformance, they're free of charge right now. There's been a little bit of discussion about that at the council level, but it's essentially to help streamline and reduce staff load, right? Of later work that we would be doing anyway to bring land use and, or excuse me, zoning into conformance with the master plan land use. And so that's what the applicant has done. They've, as Dave noted, they originally submitted under MF30 zoning, which is a little bit more dense, has very similar development standards than MF21. But ultimately, the policy direction we heard from council, some of the concerns from the neighbor about, about density and discussions on projects in the vicinity from the bodies of the city. The applicant decided to kind of downgrade that to an MF21 request. As Dave noted, there's adequate city services, RTC transit lines and bus stops is in the direct vicinity, so it's a good infill site. That is all I have, I did, I did receive five comments from community members. Three were opposed with concerns related to traffic. And I had one kind of opposed, asking basically for more commercial on that, in that area. And then I had two people kind of neutral, just general inquiries. Staff was, excuse me, able to make all the applicable findings and recommends the planning commission recommend that the council approve the zoning. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Kyle. Commissioners, disclosures, start with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I visited the site and received and read emails.
Commissioner Dragic, same disclosures?
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures?
Commissioner Villanueva, same disclosures?
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures?
Commissioner Taylor, same disclosures, Michelle, do we have any public comment on this item? Or Tony?
Public comment was received and entered as part of the record. There were no voicemail, no voicemails received and no comment cards received.
Does anybody out there wish to make public comment on this item? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or of Kyle.
Commissioner Villanueva?
I have a clarifying question, you may have mentioned it, Kyle. Is it correct that the MF21 will comply with the new master plan, is that right? Did I understand that correctly?
Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, that is correct if the upcoming, at the upcoming council meetings, if the council adopts it and the regional planning commission approves or completes their conformance review. So that would effectuate that.
And I have an update, that was reviewed at the last council meeting, the council did approve that. So the next step is regional conformance review, then it would come back for certification. So they held the public hearing and they approved that change.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dave, quick question for you. In the analysis of the site as it exists, it doesn't appear that there's really any developmental constraints on that site with respect to, you know, certainly not grading challenges or anything like that. Are there any of them that you're aware of?
Nothing that I'm aware of, I mean, our biggest development constraint on the site, working with the one-acre lot, has similar to the site to the south. There's some townhomes there that have a big cul-de-sac bulb turnaround for fire access, we're going to have the same type of constraint. We're going to have the same type of constraint. End of the day, you're probably going to have about fifty percent of that site that actually is developable once you meet setbacks, parking, and fire access requirements that are on it. As far as any, you know, topography, earthquake, faults, any constraints, no, I'm not aware of anything out there.
Okay, thank you. You anticipated my follow-up questions, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion? Mr. Villanueva?
I just want to share a couple things that I really like about the project. I like that it is near major arterial streets. RTC is not far. It's easy to get in and out of that area. I don't live in that neighborhood, but I don't live far from there, and we ride our bikes all the time around there. So I think it's great infill location for MF twenty-one.
Commissioner Gower?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
In the case of three-three-six-nine-zero Warren Way zoning map amendment based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make all the findings.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'll second that. I can also make all the findings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Good luck with your project. Or you don't have a project, but good luck. Okay, we're moving on to item five-point-four. LDC two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-five-eight Echo Avenue Concrete Batch Plant. This is a request for a conditional use permit. Do we have a presentation from the applicant? Just so you know, the previous applicant did it in three minutes. No pressure, I'm kidding. You have fifteen minutes.
He was about four and a half minutes, I believe. Yeah, I'll do my best. Yes, thank you. Derek Wilson, on behalf of Three D Concrete, the project applicant, this is a special use permit. Michelle, I forgot how to click through the slides here. Just click. Should just be able to. There we go. Okay. This is located on Echo Avenue and Mount Anderson Street, accessed off of Sted Boulevard. You can see it's a vacant flat site right now. We're proposing to put a concrete batch plant on this site. This is an industrial use located within an industrial area. Specific request is a conditional use permit to allow for the plant as well as potentially twenty-four-hour operation. It's not guaranteed the plant will operate twenty-four hours, but they would like to have that flexibility. When they're busy, they're busy, and they run crews whenever the demand is there. So it's not anticipated they would run all the time late, but it could happen. I'd like to note that manufacturing is allowed by right in industrial. For reasons I don't fully accept, concrete plant is not considered manufacturing, so therefore we have to request this twenty-four-hour use. In my opinion, it should be rolled into the allowed by right, but it isn't, so we have to make that request. It's an industrial use, an industrial piece of property in a almost entirely industrial area, so entirely appropriate from a zoning standpoint. Adjacent uses, largely industrial uses. There's an electrical substation nearby. There is an elementary school separated by another property, so by two properties, in fact, so it's well separated. There's residential more than a quarter-mile away. So essentially, no impacts to any adjacent properties. The site used to be a concrete plant, so we're just reenacting an old use. So that's important because it shows that the site functions well as a concrete plant. It's a compatible use for the area. It's an easy site, it's level, there are no real constraints there. It's important to note that Three D Concrete's a local operator, they're familiar with local environmental laws, they have the necessary permits, they know what they're doing, and they're ready to get to work, and they're ready to comply with all regulations. Sorry, haven't, there we go. It's difficult to make a concrete plant, site plant, look exciting, but this shows that we have ample space on the property to contain the use. There'll be onsite detention. If there are any specific questions about stormwater generation, we have our engineer here, so he can address any of that. No permanent construction required with this project. We're going to add some paved parking, some hardscape for travel areas, but we're not adding some buildings. We're not pouring a bunch of foundations or anything. Fairly simple operation. Truck traffic, I anticipated that would be a question, so we have very low traffic generation on this site. Peak hour is twenty trips for trucks and employees, so fairly low generation. And in fact, traffic is an important justification for the entire project. We're bringing the concrete production close to where the end users are, up in the North Valleys. So right now, the Three D is based out of Sparks. They have to run all their trucks through, not all, most of their trucks through the spaghetti bowl. This is bringing the site closer to where it's actually needed. So I think that's an important justification for doing this operation. And based on that, this project helps support some of the master plan policies. Efficient use of location, efficient use of infrastructure, removing traffic away from the spaghetti bowl, reducing vehicle miles traveled, we're using an underutilized site. So we think the project is strongly justified by the master plan, by the zoning, and by the just general needs of the area. So if people had specific questions, I'd be happy to provide additional answers. Thanks.
Thank you. Kyle, again.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Commission Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner, again for the record. I'm here to present Echo Avenue Concrete Batch. Whoop. Lost my PowerPoint. Just looked at it wrong. Okay. All right, so there's a little overview of the site. You have, excuse me, southwest corner of Echo Avenue and Mount Anderson Street. Three-point-four acre, currently vacant site, but heavily disturbed. Obviously, as Derek touched on, it's been used in an industrial fashion in the past. The request here is for a CUP, conditional use permit, to establish a concrete batch plant use, and also hours of operation between eleven PM and six AM. Key issues are compatibility with surrounding area, excuse me, surrounding uses and zoning and code compliance. Here's a little look at the site plan again. Just something to note, also noted in the staff report is that the nearest residentially zoned property is plus or minus almost fifteen, or more than fifteen-hundred feet from the site. This is an established industrial area, and noise and proposed hours are not anticipated to negatively impact the area. Several, there are several recommended conditions of approval related to site improvements and landscaping to ensure code compliance. Here's a picture of the landscape plan. You can see there's a landscape buffer, street frontage improvements, that's part of the conditions that these be improved, and that street trees and that frontage sidewalks, that those improvements be made. Here's just a look at kind of elevation view, I'd call it, of the silo. It's roughly fifty-one feet tall. This is allowed per our municipal code and is exempt from building height requirements. It is very similar to other equipment, you know, with similar type of facilities. Don't anticipate any additional impacts with that. Staff has not received any public comment in relation to this request. And I was able to make all the applicable findings and recommend the Planning Commission approve the request. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Kyle. Commissioners, disclosures? Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Commissioner Dragic, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, I visited the site all by my lonesome, apparently.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures. You need a hobby. Commissioners, I'm sorry, Michelle or Tony, do we have any public comment for this item?
No public comment received, no voicemails received, and there was no request to speak forms received.
Great. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant and discussion, or of Kyle. Commissioner Villanueva?
I have one question. Applicant for the applicant. So I'm not familiar, I'm not too familiar with concrete batch and what that entails. Do we need to be concerned about particulate matter or anything like that getting in the air? Because I know there is a school not far from what I can see here. Is that going to be a concern?
So, to answer your first question, the concrete needs to be mixed up near to where it's going to be used. You can't mix it up and let it sit around, because obviously it turns to rock. So the more you can, the closer you can be to your end user, the more convenient it is for everybody. So that's the idea. They bring the raw materials there, they mix it up, and then they send it out to the sites. So yes, there certainly are considerations for dust control. That's part of Three D Concrete's normal operation. They've been doing that for years. What they do is they keep certain moisture content in the materials. And they don't just do it because they're good guys, and because for dust control, you have to do that to make the concrete work properly. So it's just part of their normal operations, they're familiar with it. And of course, they do have dust control permits, they're familiar with those regulations. So yes, it's something to monitor, but they're skilled at it, and there's a system for doing it.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant. Derek, I know you didn't have to do any sort of a sound study or anything, but can you give me a sense of what the decibel is, like at the property boundary of the facility?
I'm hoping that somebody on the team can do that. I can tell you right now, their existing operation is near, not downtown Sparks, but industrial area of Sparks, and they manage it there. But if there's, but we, it hasn't been an issue, so I don't have those figures in front of me, but if some of the team has input on that? We? Yeah, we've, I'm sorry, I understood that.
Just the backup alarms on the equipment, just for decibel readings. We just went through that.
Oh, okay, so the machines are rated to monitor sound emissions? Okay, would you mind coming to the podium and saying that? Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the, you know, what the decibel range is of the facility when it's operating.
So, when the facility's operating, as far as the plan itself, I can get the exact decibel readings for that plant. We have the same plant in three other locations, Carson City, Waltham Way by USA Parkway, and out east in Battle Mountain. What the main decibel readings that were going to occur is the backup alarms on the loader, and the backup alarms on however many mixer trucks, concrete mixer trucks, that we have in the yard, dependent upon the production for that day. But as far as the plant's concerned, it's all air and hydraulic actuated, so it's minimal decibel readings on it. When we do our decibel readings for OSHA and MSHA, we bring in the backup alarms, and it's well below that standard. So if that's something we can get by tomorrow, so.
No, I think it's just informative for me in making the decision, the sound output of the facility relative to the backup alarms, that gives me a reference point of the sound. So the backup alarms are louder, louder than the facility itself.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Sir, would you please state your name for the record? Your name?
My name is Vance Demars. I'm the Vice President of Three D Concrete. Sign.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Motion?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. In case of LDC two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-five-eight Echo Avenue Concrete Batch Plant, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions of the approval contained in the staff report, and I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Gower, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, thank you so much. Good luck with your project. Thank you for staying out of the spaghetti bowl. Okay, we're moving on to item five-point-five. LDC two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-six-nine Yorkshire subdivision. This is a request for a tentative map to develop sixteen single-family attached dwelling units and to a major site plan review. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Hi there, my name is Michelle Dugan. I'm with the Community Housing Land Trust. We are an LLC under the umbrella of the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada. We are working with developer David Dahl of Real Property Services to develop twenty single-family homes for ownership. Sixteen are going to be on this Yorkshire subdivision, and four will be across the street, on a parcel across the street that we also own. The land was donated by the City of Reno to the Community Housing Land Trust to be used to develop affordable housing for families making less than eighty percent of the area median income. So the way that the community land trust model works, the Community Housing Land Trust will retain the land beneath the homes, and homeowners will own the houses on top and pay a small monthly ground lease fee to the land trust. Homeowners will also enter into a ninety-nine-year ground lease with the Community Housing Land Trust. At resale, the homes cannot be sold on the open market. They, there's, the sales price will be restricted based on a formula tied to the area median income. And the homes will be resold to another qualified buyer. And through this model, the homes will be affordable forever. So the project will be sixteen single-family attached units. They're planned to be three-bedroom, two-bathroom, about one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty square feet. There will be a landscape buffer between the street and the rear lot facing, fencing of the homeowners' backyards. So in order to qualify, buyers will need to be making under eighty percent of the area median income, but enough so that the housing costs are no more than thirty-five percent of their monthly income. And housing plus additional debt don't equal more than forty-three percent of their monthly income. So this is just showing a bit of the location at the northeast corner of West Golden Valley Road and Yorkshire, approximately one-half mile west of Virginia Street. It's a one-point-eight-nine acre site, and will require storm drain piping and detention ponds. The site will meet requirements of hillside development ordinance. And then this one is just showing the parcel map in the area. The applicants, we have read and approved the findings of the staff report that are included in the staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Presentation from Brooke. Good to see you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner, for the record. So just to quickly go over the project information and the requests one more time. So it is a one-point-eight-eight-nine acre site. It is located on the corner of Yorkshire and Golden Valley Road. The illustration gives you a little bit more of a context of where the site is located. Also, the additional, what's around that site. We're looking at multifamily fourteen, that's largely Reno Housing Authority. That's largely Reno Housing Authority project. And then we're looking at SF8, which is a similar zoning to what we have on this site. The request is for 16 attached, single-family dwelling units and major site plan reviews for disturbance of a major drainageway and cuts and fills. So looking at that zoning of SF8 and that site size of 1.89, we're seeing that that would allow for 15 units. Title 18, Article 15 Housing allows for affordable housing incentives, and that is a density incentive. Looking at the calculations and how this was proposed by the applicant, they meet the requirements for that and the 80%. This would allow up to 21 units on this site with those incentives. They are requesting to have that one additional unit on this site. That restriction is largely due to the housing product, what they're trying to deliver, and then the site constraints that we have on that, that that 16 became the number that worked for them. Master plan, single-family neighborhood, consistent with what's happening on that southern side of those railroad tracks. As we look at the project itself, we're looking at a twin home unit. Eight twin home units coming through, accessing off of Yorkshire. They do have an emergency exit looking on the east side of the project that will be gated and balled and signed correctly to prevent access going through there, but will provide emergency access as needed on that. Additionally, we're seeing RTC improvements. RTC is currently starting construction and will be completing construction of Golden Valley roadway up to Yorkshire, so we would anticipate that with new paving, curb, sidewalk, and any landscape or other requirements on that. We would anticipate that that landscape would not have a landscape, or the sidewalk would not have a landscape median that is pretty consistent with the surrounding area and that they would consistently run that sidewalk up to meet. The applicant would be required to complete the pedestrian sidewalk and connectivity along throughout the site and through there, along Yorkshire. We do have, we're looking at that disturbed major drainageway. If you have visited the site, that drainageway is really a result of how that has been diverted underneath the intersection at that point. In an analysis of that drainageway, we're seeing high disturbance of that drainageway both above and below this drainageway. We do not anticipate that we're seeing a number of value or an amount of value out of this this particular major drainageway in this, in this small section that has gone through here. They will be diverting that. It will go to the south of the property, divert down, and then reconnect down at the eastern end of the property. You're also seeing the storm drain for the property being consolidated on that eastern side of the property. Additionally, the grading, we're seeing walls happening to the north side of that to, which will be cutting into that hillside. And then we're seeing walls on the backside of that to facilitate some of the roadway and stuff. So that grading really is necessary to help facilitate the access to the site and then to to further lay out those pads. As I mentioned before, that pedestrian connectivity runs through the site out to sidewalk that is proposed to be in place shortly along Golden Valley and with the site on the other. Additionally, as we look at this affordable housing option, we do have transit in that additional area. There are transit stops nearby, but additionally, what's unique about this area is it does have the FlexRide, which means they can call within 15 minutes. They can pick up a ride and be transported to their desired location. There are two unique conditions with that that we don't usually, on this site, that we don't usually see. The first one really deals with the idea of the land trust and the land being held underneath. When these are parcel mapped and go through the final map process, these won't come in as we would traditionally see, see that where the land would be owned underneath. It would come in more as a condo, and so they will own the structure, and then there will be a land underneath that will come in that. So we inserted that condition just to make sure as that's going through the process that we're making sure that we correctly map that. Secondly, we're looking at the landscape. The landscape will have to meet all RMC Reno Municipal Codes for that, not only along the streetscape, but along the front yards of the homes. We have, because of this unique situation of the landowner being separate from the structure owner, we have conditioned that the landscape and irrigation be really the responsibility of the underlying landowner. That ensures that we consistently can maintain that landscape and the viability, long-term viability of that landscape. So staff can make all the applicable findings with, subject to the conditions as of proposed, and recommends approval of the project. I'm available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. Let's do disclosures, starting with Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received and read emails.
I read and received, or Commissioner Draculich read and received emails and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Velto, the same.
Commissioner Villanueva, I read and received emails.
Commissioner Gower, same disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor, I just noticed that I need to get some direction from our legal team. CME was mentioned as one of the project partners, and I am a subconsultant to CME on other projects, not this project, and would never be on a residential project with them.
So your business entity is not going to receive any pecuniary benefit from this project, or they were a consultant?
No.
Okay.
No.
So we'll just take that disclosure on the record, and you'll be allowed to vote on this project.
Okay, thank you, Carl. And I received emails. Michelle, I have these public comment and these public comment requests. Were there any other public comment?
Public comment received and entered as part of the record. There were no voicemail received.
Okay, it looks like the first public comment is Caroline Van Stralen and is, wishes to make a statement in opposition. So if you want to come up and state your name, you'll have three minutes. Thank you. We'll need you to really talk into that microphone. It bends.
All right.
And state your name, please, real quick.
This project is 16 homes on approximately 1.78 or 1.8 acres. It abuts to Yorkshire Mobile Home Park where I live. There's 30 units back there, so this would be a huge disturbance. The, I don't know if they've done a traffic or pedestrian count, excuse my voice, but there are 400 to 500 homes on the southerly and the westerly side that funnel down, funnel down Golden Valley Road. Also coming out of Yorkshire Mobile Home Park, there are 30 units, 30 cars plus, that also funnel onto that. So there's children walking up to their homes. It's a huge pedestrian area, plus the traffic count. There's school buses, access. The railroad runs right adjacent to this property. So I'm concerned about children in the area, particularly if they're in this housing unit, because it doesn't look like there's any place for them to go. I'm concerned about the egress and ingress from, from this project because it's, they're either going to have to go out on Yorkshire Road or Golden Valley, which is going to be, you know, create quite a, I don't know, a lot of road problems there, but also the, I wanted to know if there was an EIR report done on this property. There's an, it's a gully, it's a huge gully, and it's going to take massive excavation to fill this in, plus put all the utility lines in. And I think it's just going to be a great nuisance, and especially one of the butts to where our living units are. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you state your name really quick for us, please?
Carolyn Van Stralen.
Thank you. Next is Greg Alston. He wishes to make a statement in opposition of the project. Greg, if you want to come up, you'll have three minutes, and if you say your name for us, please.
My name is Greg Alston. I'm the manager of Yorkshire Mobile Home Park, which is a 55-plus community. Is there any way to get the graphics back up on the map up there?
We can try and do it under, when we, when we go back, we'll get some maps up, but not right now.
I have a couple of concerns about that. Being a senior citizen mobile home park, low-income housing, I have concerns about the safety for the residents of my park. We have a low income to our south, and we've had numerous break-ins, both car and in my equipment shed. Again, it just raises a concern about the older folks in the park. We have an equipment area that we lease from Southern Pacific to the north of us in the back, and we have an easement down that road and on to Golden Valley Road. And I'd like to know what's going to happen with that. If I could get the graphic up, there's one more concern. The border between our RV area where our residents park and the property that butts up, we have a natural drain that runs down there. I don't know what they're going to do about that. So I guess I'm asking, you know, the North Valley has just been overrun with buildings, with superstructures, with Amazon, and all nature of things. I'm asking you to put the brakes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. William D. wishes to make a statement in opposition. You have three minutes, and if you state your name, please.
William D. and I live in the senior mobile park on Yorkshire. I have the engineering, basically, for, I'm sure that that's going to be well researched, but I don't know if everybody's been to the site, but the amount of fill is just monumental. And the grading of the land is, you know, it's just hard for a non-engineering person to realize how that's going to be done cost-effectively and safely. So that's just one. Then I have, I do a lot of walking in the area. I have a little dog and I walk many times a day. And I go past the four-way stop sign at Yorkshire and Golden. And I can tell you from experience that 75% of the people do not make a legal full stop at that stop. 25% just don't even pump the brakes. And I've been, you know, I can say, like in the seven years I've lived there, about, I've been past that about 12,000 times with my dog and walking, so I know, you know, this is the case. I'm concerned about adding more houses, more traffic, more kids to that area, that it's not safe. I mean, ideally, maybe, you know, a traffic light, but I know it's too expensive. But there's also construction going on now in Yorkshire, on Golden. I don't know if something could be done, but I'm concerned about the safety of the children in the area that go by with their skateboards right through the area, can have more kids, more people. It's just destined for a problem. At least crosswalks, flashlights, or something, because it's really a dangerous spot. Other, I'm concerned there's a exit for this site on the, goes on to Yorkshire. And then we have the exit entrance to our, you know, facility, to our spot. And I'm concerned that's too close together. There's, you know, potential disaster, somebody coming out both sides, it's very close. And I'm concerned that it's going to be difficult for somebody to, to basically be observant all the time with the two being so close together. I guess my last concern is that the other three corners of this intersection are all city housing. And I got to say that they're well-maintained and do a very nice job of taking care of those sites. But the, I don't know, what is going to be the the ability to maintain the site in this area? Is there going to be an HOA? Is there going to be, how do we know it's going to be maintained in the same way all the other, you know, areas are going to be maintained? So I'd like to have that comfort level, though, that it's not going to degrade, you know, the rest of the area that's there. I guess that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Anybody else wishing to make public comment? Okay, we will close public com. We're going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of either the applicant or of Brooke. Who'd like to start?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question, I think. Brooke, during public comment, a reference was made to an easement along the north property line. Maybe I missed it in the staff report, and I apologize if I did, but can you talk to that?
Yes, we did research in that with the engineering staff. That easement does not run along this property. They have been using this property to access Golden Valley, but the easement itself or any access should come from the railroad property itself, which is directly to the north of this property. So they would have to maintain their access and roadway from the property, the actual property to the north of this and not this property. So there is no access easement across this, this particular subject property.
I'm looking at the map right now on my screen, and I'm seeing a dirt roadway that's leaving. I think what the gentleman referenced is a storage area on the backside of the mobile home park there, accessing Golden Valley Road. Is that the?
Correct. And that currently, they're currently running that across the subject property, but there is no easement across that. The added access should go through the railroad property on to Golden Valley and not through the subject property.
Okay.
Or would staff look this, we could find no easement that related that, that they had any sort of legal right to access through the, through the subject property?
How do they go through the railroad property?
There's currently, there's currently a railing there, and so that would have to be modified or changed to provide them proper and legal access to their site. But currently, they don't, they've been using the subject property, but we can find nothing that gives them the legal right to do that.
Okay. Thanks, Brooke.
Michelle, would you mind putting up that map from the presentation? Or Tony, Michelle, the map from the presentation? Sure, that'll work. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brooke, question for you. I had this question actually before the presentation or the public comment, but I see in the staff report that we're looking at, I believe it's 3,000 cubic feet or square feet of cut and 10,000 square feet of fill. But I don't have, usually with a request for cuts and fills, we have a map that shows us the area that we're looking at.
Correct.
I don't have that in here. So two questions. There's a mention of an adjacent property from which the 7,000 square feet of cut is coming from. Can you, maybe on the map before this, point to where that parcel is at? Now you've done.
I don't know. Yeah, now I'm going. If I can go to that first map, please. So these were properties that were originally owned by the city of Reno. They've been donated over to the land trust. So it's the subject property. And then if we look directly to the south of that and to the east of the MF14 across Golden Valley, there is a corner lot there. What seems to have happened at this time is whenever this got developed at some point, obviously, the subject parcel became a remnant parcel of the overall sort of development. Probably some of the challenges with that site and some of the other things made it non-viable to develop at that time. What we've seen happen across the street is they've stockpiled, basically, from previous development on that site. So we're seeing, even though it's a corner lot, it comes to grade, we're seeing a large wall of dirt over there that's been stockpiled for, for, I don't large wall of dirt over there that's been stockpiled for, for, I don't know how long, but a, a long period of time. So what they are, what they would plan to do is, is to be moving the percentage of that dirt over to the current site, so just across the street. Any additional fill that they would need would have to be imported. And then that would, additionally, that would help to facilitate the development of the, the parcel across the street that they're looking to develop in the near future.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I was trying to get a sense of exactly how far away we were. Now, I guess in looking at the site itself and maybe going back to the, the enlarged one, obviously we've got a drainage situation that's there now. Is, and I see the retention basin. Are we planning on, is there going to be storm drain pipe? Are we moving the channel? How is the?
The channel, yeah, the channel will be realigned. So currently that channel comes from the south, southwest portion of the intersection and runs sort of at a diagonal. So it's coming from that southwest corner, coming over to the northeast corner.
You can use the mouse on the map.
Yep. So that drainage currently is coming, is ending here. It's been disturbed up above and kind of rerouted to get there. It's now currently piped under here and now, and has created, and basically piped out, and that has sort of naturally taken the fall of the land and created the, the drainage way that we see running kind of currently through the site this way and over on to the, the railroad property. What we're seeing is this coming out now with some piping and some swaling. It will come along this back edge, along the back edge of the storm drain, come under and then back down and out this way. So that will be rerouted to accommodate the development of the pads, residential pads.
And then I guess just the, the follow-up, and, and maybe it's in here, but I was, I guess I was looking at square footage. What's the, I guess, the, the maximum fill height that we're looking at on the site?
You know, a, a large portion of that is that large, the drainage and filling in that drainage, I'd anticipate that could be from 10 to 15 feet on that fill, depending and, and as we see that slope down. Obviously, they're having to meet the road grade as they're, as that comes down to the, the eastern portion of the site, and so we'd anticipate that, that becomes lower. There's a couple deeper spots, especially where the original drainage has kind of cut out a large hole in the middle of the site.
Okay, so by and large, if I was looking at a cut and fill map, the central kind of diagonal portion of it would be fill.
Yep.
And the northern portion, closer to the adjacent park for the residences, there's actually cut happening on that side.
Correct. We'd be seeing cut to the north of the site, and you can see the walls behind the units itself there retaining that. And then we would be seeing fill through the roadway area and then to the four, or the eight pads that we're seeing to the south of the site would be fill and coming back off that side.
So from a perception standpoint, it's not that they're filling the site all the way up to the level of the adjacent parcel. We're actually cutting the site down and filling it as needed in order to make it a more balanced approach from one site to the, from one entrance to the other.
Correct. Many of the residents that were here tonight, from what I gather, are residents of the development, mobile home development to the north of this site. Those homes will sit much lower. It's a fairly steep grade that kind of, or steeper grade that goes up that way, so those homes will be cut in, lay much lower, and so we're not seeing that direct impact off that. That's why we didn't worry about any sort of screening or buffering of landscape or anything of that. Additionally, we're seeing, as you can see where the, the pads are, there's a, a fair amount of, of land, or of, of land that lies between the northern boundary and the, the home itself or the structure itself.
Thank you. And then, Madam Chair, I have one question about the traffic, if I can. Just as a clarification, because again, it came up in public comment, is there any, in looking at this map, it appears that there's two ways into this development, but as I understand the staff report, traffic is limited to an entrance, not, they're not allowed to enter and exit the site off of Golden Valley. That's an emergency access only?
Correct. And that, and that's largely driven by that proximity of the roadway across the street. Some original plans came in of the extension of that roadway. It made it really challenging to utilize the site as far as storm drainage and a number of those other things. It was determined that access off of Yorkshire was probably more appropriate and more controlled. That brings them out, brings them to a four-way stop and then moves on versus the potential of if we had another four-way or a, a two-way stop at the intersection there. And so they, all traffic will go to Yorkshire, out to the four-way and then be distributed out that way.
Okay.
The, the Golden Valley is only for emergency services and to make sure that those, that can be met in through that way. It'll be gated.
Okay.
And ballered and signed correctly to, to make sure that that's free and, and always has access.
Okay. And then to the point on the Yorkshire access, and maybe you can defer to Mike, who's been sitting quietly in the corner. Do we have, have we analyzed the distance between those two driveway entrances with respect to the travel distances required for all of our interchanges?
So I did, I did work with the engineer at staff. So on Yorkshire, the main concern would be the entrance that we have to the north of this site. The staff engineer I worked with did not have concerns and felt that it met the distance. I can also bring up Mike, that can further detail sort of how that works and, and how that's analyzed.
But, but it has, it has been reviewed as part of?
It has been reviewed by our engineering staff, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Brooke. Madam Chair, those were my questions.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Villanueva?
I have a question for the, yeah, the applicant, I think, is best. Is there going to be a wall separating? I, I see that the railroad is adjacent to where the subject property site's going to be, the project site. Is there going to be a wall separating the project from where that railroad's going to be?
It's an elevation separation.
Uh, there's going to be an elevation separation.
Okay. That's, and, and that was actually going to be, yeah, okay, so I wasn't sure. So the, the project site is actually going to be much lower than the, where the railroad, and maybe this is appropriate for?
Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner, for the record. As we, as we move to that eastern portion of the site, what we're seeing is some walls and retaining that we'll see actually a drop down into that site, so this site will sit slightly higher as to maintain that roadway, the requirements of that roadway and others of that. We did not, we, we looked at the potential of the wall there or some sort of wall. We did not figure because of that, that roadway being shut off and the proximity, the sidewalk sort of running on the interior side or, or that side, that we, we weren't as concerned about that. You know, obviously that can be something that's conditioned if it is a concern of that proximity to the roadway and the safety of that.
Okay, yeah, that was, you're getting to my point. Yeah, safety was a concern for me. Okay.
Commissioners, other questions? So I think we've addressed what I've heard during public comment. There was one question on the maintenance, and I think I understand, but Brooke, would you mind just clarifying how that is going to work between the landowner and the unit, house owner?
Certainly. So as was described before, with this land trust, what, what makes it work is that there is one single owner that owns the land underneath and then the, the structures are sold. So that takes the land value out of the overall cost of the, the home or project. They then charge the lease. We would anticipate that, that lease would be used for maintenance, upkeep, any ongoing larger things. In addition to, speaking with the applicant, they will be creating an HOA with this, that they, they will have the investment of, of the owners in that and to help guide that maintenance and, and make sure that those, those operations are happening.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Velto?
Yes. Kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Villanueva's concern, is there an objection to requiring a wall between the project and the railroad tracks from the applicant?
Discussing with the applicant, I, I think they would be open to a fence versus a solid wall, and that's due largely to the cost, cost associated with building a solid wall along there.
So the condition could be there'll be a fence between the project and the railroad?
Yeah. I, I think it would be probably, prior to approval of a final map, the applicant shall provide plans that demonstrate a fence has been installed along the eastern boundary of the project site. Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion?
Commissioner Draculich, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think it can be stated enough how important a project like this is to be serving our low-income individuals, making less than 80% of the AMI. So thank you. I was very happy to see this on the agenda, and I, I hope to see some more like this, but it does take a certain structure like the Community Housing Land Trust to make something like this happen, and it is vital to our community in keeping in line with socioeconomic diversity. So thank you, and I do wish you the best on here.
Commissioner Villanueva?
I want to echo that, those thoughts, and also I understand cost is a factor here. We're trying to make this as affordable as possible, so I really do appreciate the fence. I mean, I, it's great that you guys have that, that that elevation is there. I'm just concerned kids running up and down that. I don't, again, you, you heard my disclosures, I haven't been to the site, so I do appreciate that fence being added, and, and I understand the cost is a big factor, so thank you. Also, yeah, I think it's important that we have these type of projects, and I appreciate the HOA component to help keep the quality of the, you know, the character of the, the community healthy, and so thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Motion?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to put on the record, I am ready to make a motion, too, but I don't have to be the one to do it. I just wanted to put on the record that I appreciated the comments that the public brought in tonight, did take those into consideration. You know, based on the discussion that we had tonight, I think there were some good answers, that the experts and staff looked at the, the project and felt comfortable with the way it was designed, and I do support the, the addition of the fence for the safety, but I did want to just put that on record. Thank you.
Okay. You're on roll.
Commissioner Draculich is going to make the motion.
Oh, Commissioner Draculich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My fellow commissioner typed it up for me, just whipped it out, appreciate it. I would like to make a motion. In a matter of case number LDC-21-00069 Yorkshire subdivision, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map and major site plan review subject to conditions, including an additional condition. Prior to approval of final map, the applicant shall provide plans demonstrating a fence will be provided on the eastern boundary of the project site, and I can meet all the findings.
Commissioner, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Good luck with your project. Okay, I think we're going to move on to item 5.6. This is case number LDC-21-00073 Military Road Power Line Relocation. This is a request for a special use permit. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mark Sullivan, representing Sierra Pacific Power, doing business as NV Energy, and I'm going to make two statements here. One of them is, I hope to be done in 90 seconds, and I hope you guys are agreeable with that, and also the other good news, I think, is I'm not looking for any variances or anything like that tonight. Oh, you already got it up there. Okay, so this would orient you to the site. Basically what it is, it's a relocation of a existing transmission line. That yellow block there is the corner of Lemon Drive and Military Road. Off to the left, you'll see 395 going north and Lemon Valley Drive, and that's the intersection that you see there of Military and Lemon. There's an approval there for a special use permit right now for a 711 that you guys have already seen, and inadvertently, the power line that runs across that property needs to be relocated over the boundary line, so as not to interfere with the development that was proposed. So we took it upon ourselves to go ahead and relocate that. There's some challenges. Because it, 120 KV line, it has to go to regional planning, has it come to you guys? City Council can get sponsored, regional planning, regional planning, you heard the process earlier. So that's what the project is, is to relocate a line in the other picture. Do we have the other one? I thought it was magic that this one went up there. There it goes. So what it is, existing location, you can see, again, there's Military and Lemon. The existing location of the line is the red line. There's five poles from the bottom to the top, and then the relocation is the blue line, and again, five poles, exact same type of poles, we're just moving it over to allow for the development that has already been approved. And that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you very much. Kyle, do you have a presentation? And can you beat 90 seconds?
I can, no. I can, but I won't. All right, last, last, last item of the night, I got to drag this on. Just kidding. Okay, um, yeah, Mark, Mark pretty much covered the gist of the, the request, very straightforward request. Move an existing major utility line per code requires a conditional, or conditional use permit. The, the 711 came for, before the planning commission before and has been approved. That's a site plan I pulled from that, just to give you a little refresher. That red circle just shows you that that relocation was contemplated with that initial request. It's just, unfortunately, the applicant at the time didn't wrap it into that request, and so here we are back today. That's pretty much it. Mark covered kind of what the relocation consists of. I'll just say that there was two, there is two properties involved. So the Peak property, where the Commonwealth apartments, they've also joined in as applicants of this project, because one pole will be located on their property, but still in, in the utility easement area. So with that being said, here's a picture of, of the existing utility line. They're going to, as Mark noted, they're going to look exactly the same, just slightly over to this kind of graded area over there. As Mark noted, too, just, again, I'll just highlight the process just real quick. After the planning commission, the city council will, so planning commission will make the decision on the conditional use permit, then it will go forward to the city council for a consideration of a sponsorship. It has to be approved by both the regional planning commission and the regional planning governing board. And essentially, the planning commission approves the project of regional significance. The regional governing board has to approve the map amendment. There's associated map amendment to move the utility quarter. So just quick explanation on kind of how that is handled. I was able to make all the applicable findings. I did not receive any public comment associated with this request, and recommend that the planning commission approve the request. I'm here for any questions you have.
Thanks, Kyle. Commissioners, disclosures, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva, no disclosures.
Commissioner Velto, the same?
Commissioner Draculich, same disclosures.
Mr. Johnson, I was once again lonely as I walked and went to visit the site.
Commissioner Taylor, no disclosures. Michelle, do we have any public comment for this item? Or Tony, sorry?
There's no public comment received, no voicemails received, and no comment cards received.
Mike, do you want to make public comment? Okay. We're going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of the applicant or discussion. Commissioner Gower?
Two quick questions for the applicant. Mark, on a scale of 1 to 10, how much do you miss being on the planning commission?
Zero. There's a little bit of mental illness involved. When you guys get off a planning commission, you'll still watch these meetings. I mean, I've watched the whole meeting, and I truly, I know what a sacrifice it is. I mean, I've watched the whole meeting, and truly, I know what a sacrifice it is for you guys to do this, and I know it's not just a sacrifice for you, it's a sacrifice for your families and your loved ones, friends, family, because it's time you're taking away from them. I know you got little guys, well, they're not so little anymore, but, which I love his kid. I mean, I would travel halfway around the world to see those guys. And I just think it's a huge sacrifice, what you do, and I know it's a thankless job. I would thank you. Hasn't had to do with approval tonight or not, I would have rather have done this under public comment, but since I had the mic, it just is really, I think a lot of people appreciate the job you do. I've listened to all the conversation you guys had tonight, probably the more, I've been to probably, I don't know, 500 Planning Commission meetings between Regional and Regular Planning Commission. This is one of the more thoughtful groups I've ever heard. And I know I tuned it out a long time ago on the other boards I was on, but you guys did a great job. I mean, I appreciate it, and I know, I mean, I'm compensated to be here tonight. I know you had a lot of other things to do besides on a Wednesday night at 10 o'clock at night, and so I really do appreciate it. Thank you. Now, was there another question? I don't think you want to ask another question, do you?
I forgot my other question. Thanks, Mark.
How did you turn that into that? Other questions or comments? Motion? Commissioner Velto?
In the matter of LDC 21-00073, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Johnson will second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report from our incoming chairman, maybe?
Yeah, so I guess that's part of the news. So at the meeting Monday night, it was postponed from July, so the July meeting was actually held in August. The, similar to our commission, the leadership changes in July, and it rotates between the three jurisdictions. So it had been Sparks as president, Reno as chair, and Reno as vice chair. So now Reno is chair, and I was elected to that position, and Washoe County is in the vice chair. Sarah Chivilecek from Washoe County. We had a couple of items on the agenda. One was a removal of some Reno property from the sphere of influence. This was over south of Mayan, Washoe County, formerly Washoe County property, that the applicants requested to be put back into Washoe County so they could develop under their code. And then we had some presentations on the plan. Commissioner Gower might be able to remind me of the acronym, but it's the annual plan that puts together that compiles all the information from the different jurisdictions, looking ahead with forecasts as well as work that's been done. So it's been, it's a good planning tool. And the other part is the development of a natural resources plan at the regional level to really look at both existing conditions, development constraints, areas to kind of help formulate and define that, not just the urban interface, but the actual natural resources that we have in the area to understand how those can be used. I'm probably butchering the scope of it, but it was a, it was a good discussion and approval of a consultant that they're bringing in to do it. And then the idea is that the regional is also going to be looking at a similar thing for public infrastructure improvements, so that'll be following along later. Good, I think they're really, at the regional level, they're really working to aggregate the data from the different jurisdictions, including not just the jurisdictions, but air quality, TOMWA, RTC, all of the entities that are really, you know, we see here that impact all the development, getting information about what their plans are and that. So it was, it was a really exciting presentation for that. So I don't know if Commissioner Gower, Commissioner Taylor want to follow up on that, but one more meeting in August now at the end of the month, and we don't know what's on the agenda yet.
Thank you. Arlo, staff announcements.
Staff announcements. The city council meeting last week had a number of agenda items that you've seen. The logistics center project out in the Boomtown area, that was continued at the request of the applicant to work with the neighbors on some additional provisions. So that is scheduled to be heard at the next meeting. The package of master plan text amendments that had come through the Planning Commission, those were approved without changes. So that is, among other things, the package that opened up lower-density districts in some of the master plan categories, both residential and industrial. That was approved. The neighborhood review process for conforming master plan and zoning map designations, due to really overwhelming volume of work and limited staff resources, we put forward a more streamlined process to address the map inconsistencies, primarily ward by ward, and then circle back on the more neighborhood plan efforts and the deeper dives into different neighborhoods, starting with the conservation areas. So it was a little bit scaled back in terms of the ambition, but it will speed up the completion of that conformance process to hopefully be done within a year, so we won't have any more of these non-conforming situations. That was approved by the city council. The city council reviewed topics and approved initiation of an update to tree protection standards. So outreach will be underway, and that will be coming back to the Planning Commission likely before the new year. There was a very unusual appeal of a building permit. It never reached the Planning Commission, but this is the project right next to the hub on Riverside Drive. It's received a lot of attention. The building permit approval was appealed. It was a by right allowance, and that, that approval was upheld, both by the hearings examiner and by the city council. So the project's under construction now in accordance with the building permit that was approved. And our sad news is that we will be losing Angela Fuess. She's leaving the organization. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here tonight. She should be available for the next meeting, so you haven't seen the last of her, but big loss there. On the bright side, we're getting a new planning technician, but can't replace Angela. That's all I have.
Well, I guess, thanks, Arlo. Eight commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. I'm just, at our last meeting, one of the public comments came up and had made a comment about security in the building for Planning Commission meetings, and he said that, something to the extent that he was surprised that they didn't have to walk through a metal detector or whatever it is for councils. So I'm bringing that out to put it on the record, just so it's something we can think about. And then, based on what happened this evening, I don't, I don't know if we need to increase security. It seems like emotions are kind of high, but I'm putting it out there, and whatever recommendation you guys come back with is, you know, I would support, but I just want to make sure that we're looking at it, so everybody feels safe and secure.
I will see what we can do about that. I share the concern.
And I will try and use the gavel next time, sorry. No.
I feel safe whenever Commissioner Gower's here. Outside of that, though.
Michelle and Tony, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, we're going to close public comment, and item 10, adjournment. Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you so much.